And we're good.
Okay. Hello, Lincoln. Oh, he's connecting.
There he is. Hi, Lincoln. My name is Dan Salvucci. I'm the acting chairman of the Board of Selectmen. In attendance, we have Randy Lamatino. We have Justin Evans, Kyle Kowalski, and Brian Bazanson, the full amount. So right now, Bernie, it's all on you.
All right. All right. I appreciate it. Thank you. Lincoln, good to see you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Sorry to keep you waiting like that. We need to take a break and have some lunch. So.
Absolutely.
Hope you don't mind.
Still eating my lunch.
So thank you for your interest. We thought we'd start with basically, you know, giving you an opportunity to explain who you are and, you know, what we really want to know is why are you interested in being the town administrator of Whitman?
Absolutely. Well, good afternoon again, and thank you very much, Bernie, and thank you to the members of the board for having me. And I'm very excited about this opportunity. Looking forward to speaking with you about it. So I am a finance, municipal finance and government professional, both professionally and then also have had volunteer service for many years in the field with progressively responsible positions. So right now, for the last three years, I've served as the Finance Director and Treasure Collector for the Town of Hanover. In that role, taken on several different responsibilities, obviously, finance have produced in three so far and now going on four budgets, operating budgets in excess of $60 million, and have also produced three and now going on for five-year capital budget and five-year capital plans. We can, I'm sure, will probably get a little bit further into some of my finance expertise in particular. I also mentioned particularly over the last year and a half, I've taken on many other not directly finance-related management roles. And in particular, in the last several months, the town manager in Hanover needed to take a leave for several months, and I've particularly stepped in and taken on several of the roles that would have otherwise been taken on by the town manager. I'll mention two in particular that I've worked on over the last several years, the last year. One is on economic development. So the board may know the old Hanover Mall, now Hanover Crossing, is the subject of major redevelopment in Hanover. The town has a tax increment financing plan with the mall property and is receiving, and in exchange for that tax increment financing, we're achieving $40 million in reinvestment from the owners. It most especially, most recently, and again, I'm sure we'll get more, get deeper into economic development issues later, but most especially in the town's role, I've been particularly proud now of just a couple of weeks ago. After our second try, we received a notification of a $1.3 million MassWorks grant from the Executive Office, Massachusetts Executive Office for Housing and Economic Development. And so that will support that project and contribute to the economic development of the town and the region as a whole. And another particular management activity that I've taken on, especially in the last year, again, not directly related to finance, but certainly relevant for this position, is collective bargaining. So on the town side, as opposed to the school side in Hanover, there are four unions who have the same, who have the same makeup as the, as the five unions in Whitman with the same types of groups. So over the last several months, I've been a key part of the negotiating team with those four unions. We've come to agreement recently on new three-year agreements with three of them. And I actually took the lead role without the town manager. I took the lead role in bargaining the DPW facilities contract. So certainly, you know, again, another area, not directly related to finance, but of a general management sense. I'll briefly mention my volunteer role. So how I got into the municipal finance and management world professionally was first, I've served for 10 years on the Situate Advisory Committee. So that committee has the same, the same duties as Whitman's Finance Committee. For two years, I served as chair and, you know, really got the municipal bug, as it were, through, through that work and working on a variety of capital projects, operating budgets, and really, you know, a variety of issues related to the management of the town in Situate. I'll mention briefly, prior to that, had worked in several management and finance positions for the state. Most recently, have worked at the Committee for Public Council Services, managing the multimillion-dollar accounts payable process at that agency. That's the public defender agency. If someone is accused of a crime and can't afford an attorney, had previously received and achieved my MBA and had also worked at the State Inspector General's Office and in the Governor's Budget Office. In answer to the second part of the question regarding why I'm so interested in Whitman, I've, I'm a lifelong Situate resident, lifelong South Shore resident, have always admired Whitman. And in particular, over the last several weeks, had the opportunity, already knew many folks, just both professionally and personally in Whitman, but particularly over the last several weeks, have had the opportunity to have conversations with several community leaders, some several business leaders in the town, and really got a sense from them about where they believe they are, particularly with the COVID crisis ongoing, and what they're looking for and getting a sense of what they're looking for from their town government. I think my twofold strengths and primary skills would really be an asset to the town. Number one, my financial expertise and in particular, producing budgets. The way I look at finances in particular is transparency, responsiveness and stability. You know, knowing that folks, so that, so that folks, taxpayers and the public at large know what to expect from the town financially and bringing stability to that and making sure that all information is out there and available to folks. You know, I certainly think would be an asset to Whitman in that respect. And the second piece is the economic development. You know, there is, it's really admirable where Whitman is now. And I think with some of my expertise, we can, we can bring it up that much more to a higher level. You know, being in town and seeing there being no or, or, you know, only one or two open vacant storefronts in the, in the main business district is a testament to how people want to be in Whitman. And I think with some tweaks and to, you know, perhaps zoning, zoning bylaws, and in particular aggressively going after state grants to encourage economic development. I think, you know, we could bring Whitman that, that much more up to a higher level. But I have something off of there.
Great. We don't want to do the whole interview and just. So we know you try, I know you tried to do that. But tell me how this fits into your, this position would fit into your overall, the overall arc of your career.
Sure. Well, I'd say, as I mentioned, had been in, in different finance roles at the state and in, in, in the private economic world previously, had realized through those roles that there were pieces that I wanted to know that I didn't know, and that was one reason that I went back and, and went back and furthered my education through an MBA. And then, you know, most recently, I would say in many ways, over the last several years, I really hit my stride professionally and want to, and want to bring it up another notch and contribute, not just financially, officially financially, but also at the management level in, in, for a town. So, you know, I'd say, you know, maybe it's been mid-career or approaching career for me to get into the municipal world, but I certainly found the area where I want to be. I certainly feel professionally, professionally gratified in the role I'm in now and realize that that expansion into even that much more of a management position is something that I've excelled at so far and want to try my hand at further broadening that.
Okay. Do you see something, you know, looking, you know, the standard interview question, where do you see yourself five years from now?
Sure. Well, hopefully here with all of you. That's, that's really where I'd like to be, you know. I have, certainly have a devotion to the South Shore, have lived here all my life and committed to it and committed to the economic development of our region. And hopefully, that being with this board, reflecting on the successes we've had financially in managing the town's budget, bringing some stability, improving relationships where possible with other stakeholders, including the school district and the community at large, and reflecting on the successes we've had in economic development and figuring out where we go from here after this five years, where, how do we improve further?
Okay. Well, let's, let's get into relationships a little bit in terms of your leadership style. How would you describe your leadership style? Is leadership the same as management? You know, how do you go about operating as the Chief Administrative Officer of the, of the town?
Certainly. Well, I, I look at leadership, there's leadership management, from my perspective, are certainly related, but, but not the same, certainly. And when I'd, I'd, I'd really look at leadership in the municipal context from three points of view. One, from the employees and actually, you know, managing and communicating well with employees of the town. So it, with respect to that, I certainly, wherever possible, and I certainly think it would be with the number of direct reports to town administrators in Whitman, wherever possible, I certainly encourage and practice an open-door policy. I've certainly done that to great excess, success in Hanover, being available not only to one's direct reports, but folks across, folks across the organization to come in and, and talk about a concern and being known as that listening ear, attentive and careful listening ear to help resolve. Certainly, you know, from the management perspective of employees, I think there's two things. One, having that open-door policy, but also having regular check-ins, in particular with department heads. Even if, you know, sometimes you'll have a lot to say to each other, and sometimes on a weekly basis, you may not, and that's okay. But building that relationship, making sure that there aren't any issues that are outstanding that either the department head or myself don't know about, pushing through those issues and building up that rapport and strength of the relationship. So when, so when there is a real challenge, you have that trust so that you can work together to resolve it. I think as a larger sense in the, in the organization as a whole, I'd certainly want to regularly attend department meeting, department-wide meetings and make sure that folks know who I am, that I'm accessible, that I want to hear new ideas and, you know, work forward collectively. I think, so where sort of less of the management piece comes in and the, and it's more of the leadership is relationships with elected and appointed boards like yourselves. You know, I, I'm a strong believer in having clear lines of responsibility, having the town administrator do the day-to-day management of employees and making sure that policies as, as decided upon by this board and other policymaking boards in town are moved forward, are regularly checked in on and making sure that initiatives are moving towards resolution. I, you know, I think that kind of relationship is important too in terms of presenting the Board of Selectmen in particular and other policymaking boards, clear options, not making policy decisions oneself as the town administrator, but presenting full, complete information to the board, presenting several options on how to move forward in a positive way. And then once board makes that decision, implementing it.
Okay.
And then finally, I'll just touch briefly on leadership in the community as a whole. You know, I think with social media, there are a lot of really innovative ways to communicate things and information that residents want to know on a day-to-day basis. You know, things as simple as making sure the town's website is easily accessible when someone goes there and needs to get a building permit, wants to get a dog license, wants to register to vote, having it geared towards those everyday activities and people know that their town government is there to serve them, that it's reliable and responsive to their needs and quickly responsible.
Okay. I wanted to get back into the organizational leadership role, inside the organization primarily. I mean, you could, you could look at this from outside to the other boards and committees of the town, you could look at the business. But so I guess, you know, I want to understand, one of your references referred to you as being, as, you know, as you collaborate on solutions. That's great to read. How do you do that? How do you accomplish and encourage collaboration?
Sure. Well, let me, let me dive into that by referencing a specific situation and a specific instance where we're able to achieve that. The, like many municipalities throughout Massachusetts, throughout the country, certainly in Hanover, we're experiencing tax increases that are difficult for those on fixed incomes, particularly seniors, to keep up with and stay in their homes. And we wanted to look at that creatively in how to keep people in their homes where they want to and are in any way financially able to do so. The, the creative solution we came up with, and it really involved several different, both staff and boards in coming up with this creative solution. Certainly, the Director of Assessing being the day-to-day person, handling folks who are in this particularly bad financial need and being aware of exactly where the pressure points are and the need is, and then collaborating and then encouraging her to collaborate directly with the Assistant Treasurer in, in working directly to help try and find some solutions. That, what, what that encouragement, that regular communication as a group made possible was without me micromanaging, those two worked together to, to identify some creative solutions, of which the one we, we, we decided on and laid it on as a town in moving forward was expanding existing exemptions that are available to seniors on limited incomes. So there are exemptions set in state laws, I'm sure folks know. What we did was find another, another funding source that was underutilized, the Town's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and found a mechanism through that collaboration between those two staff members and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, those volunteer, that volunteer board, found a mechanism to channel those monies towards an expanded program so that those with higher limited incomes could, could access this program and, and could better stay in their home. So I think that, I think the key metric in that was not imposing a solution from my, my perspective in my seat as the Finance Director, but rather encouraging and not micromanaging the collaboration between the, between the staff.
For to me. How did you encourage that, though? That's what I want to understand.
Oh, sure. Okay. So.
Briefly.
Certainly. So I would say primarily by having regular senior staff meetings within the Finance Department. So that, and again, I come back briefly to that idea of not waiting till there's a problem until you communicate. So having those, having frequent senior staff finance meetings so that they already worked well together in achieving goals together and so that they could go and they felt comfortable to go work without me every, every time to find another solution so that their relationship was not just what can sometimes be adversarial between the Assessing Department and the Treasure Collector.
You created an environment of which there was communication and there was collaboration.
Correct. Prior to trying to solve the issue. Yeah.
Right. When you come up with a solution, what do you do when there's a, when you come up with a solution for a problem or a new initiative and there isn't, you get pushback? How do you deal with that?
Sure. Well, I come back to this collaboration and also reassuring folks that when change is afoot and when folks know change is coming, that it's, it's never personal and it's, and it's, and it's also as an organization attempting to find a positive resolution for everyone. So, you know, I think, I, I may go into a brief situation, describe that if you'd like.
True.
So the, in, in, like many towns, the Town of Hanover has had three part-time registrars, had had three part-time registrars of voters doing the day-to-day work of registering voters, certifying nomination papers. It became clear that not through the fault of any of them, but because of their desire to work particular times, that there were particular times that weren't being covered that needed to be covered, in particular during the time of producing the census and et cetera. So working, working collaboratively with the town clerk and other leaders in town, we made the decision to, rather than making that three-part-time intermittent positions, making it one full-time position or a portion of one full-time position so that to sort of further professionalize that work and make sure that work was happening in a timely way. Now, certainly there was conflict and pushback from the existing three registrars because they maybe naturally so saw their positions as somewhat threatened. But in the end, we came to a really positive resolution by making it crystal clear to them that it wasn't personal at all, giving them the full opportunity to apply for this position if they wanted to. In, at the end of the day, all of them decided upon reflection and a lot of internal conversations with myself that they didn't, that they weren't interested in that position, but they, but I was still able to convince them all to stay on as registrars with a stipend to, so that we could retain their institutional knowledge. So I think it's really that communication and make clear that it's, it's not personal.
Okay. All right. Well, that was something I was going to ask you about, institution, instituting organizational change. So that's a good example of that. Let's talk about, you mentioned you have an open door. So, you know, a big part of leadership is being able to be present and be able to hear people. Being town administrator means you have a lot of different functions that are being, you know, that you have and a lot of different forces coming at you at different times. How do you balance staying accessible and, you know, doing your job?
Sure. Well, well, it's certainly difficult and it would be difficult. But again, you know, each organization is different. I do think there's a, there's a limit to how the, to the open-door policy working with the number of direct reports, you know, that there is a, there is a limit where that can't work. And there's, and there's a level at which it can work, you know, and, and getting myself familiar with, with Whitman's organization, I think it would be possible of achieve that with a slightly lesser number of direct reports in the Finance Department in Hanover. But, you know, to the extent that at certain times, it may not be possible when you're working on putting together the budget, when you're working on putting together a capital plan, when you're dealing with a particular challenge like, like working on snow removal or addressing a storm or addressing a particularly hard issue like COVID at a particular moment, it's okay to not have periodically, not have that open-door policy. And I think revert to making sure that there are absolutely regular check-ins with department heads. And furthermore, to the extent that other folks are hoping to meet with you, even if you can't meet with them at that moment, you can set a date and time certain in the, in the near future, when, when you know that there will be time and, and resources and energy that you can devote to that and make sure you hear them.
Okay. You know, another element of leadership is what we generally refer to as modeling the way, being a role model for the organization. Do you see yourself as being able to be, or do you see yourself as a role model? And I'm interested in how, but I'm going to give you a specific example. In this day and age of COVID, we've seen a number of public officials that have spoken one way about how people should behave, and they've done completely, you know, done the opposite. What are your thoughts on that and how do you serve as a role model within your organization?
Sure. One thing, one thing I think that's critical in any organization, but especially in municipal government, is customer service and making sure that the customer feels listened to, even if they don't necessarily want the resolution they want. So that's one area that I've always, and especially over the last three years in Hanover, have really been focused on modeling. And, and when I talk about customer service, I look at it in a couple of ways. In particular, making sure that periodically the leadership in the town, both myself as the town administrator and the department heads, to the extent that they don't on a day-to-day basis, that they periodically make sure that they're both reactively taking customer service complaints, having them come through to them sometimes, even if, you know, maybe a day-to-day basis, every day, you're not taking that customer service issue. But periodically, when, when you have a little bit of time, I think it's important to do that. And it's important, it's critical, I think, to do that for a couple of reasons. One, the modeling to employees that, that you talked about, taking those calls and directly dealing with them and not asking someone else to do it on your behalf demonstrates very clearly to employees that customer service is important and that it's sometimes maybe the most important thing that certain offices do. And making sure that you demonstrate to them that, you know, you have the knowledge and you can directly address an issue without someone else's help. And they can see, you know, maybe, maybe doing that in a creative way that, that maybe they hadn't thought of before and demonstrates its importance. But, but I, I also think that there's, it's sort of modeling for the public at large. Periodically, having leaders focus directly on individual customer service issues demonstrates to the public at large that this is important, you know, that, wow, the town administrator took my call and directly resolved my issue. And, you know, it's not someplace down in Washington that's not being responsive to me or in the state that's not being responsive to me. I, I know this person. I've met them. I've talked to them on the phone. And they know that, you know, that, and that's one thing that's so beautiful about municipal government is that it is close to those being governed and that it has the opportunity to be more nimble and responsive in, in a way that other levels of government and other organizations can't be.
How do you motivate people and how do you hold people accountable?
Sure. Let's, I, I think for motivation, I think a lot of it comes back to that modeling. Making sure that you, as the town administrator, are there every day, you know, are there early and there late, especially when there's a particularly difficult issue going on, that people know that you're there in the thick of it, you know, fighting the good fight, as it were, and being responsive and, and being present, both physically, but, you know, but also just mentally being there and being present. And I think that modeling is, is, is key. You know, the, oftentimes, I think in organizations, motivation, that folks look at it, quote unquote, you know, easy motivator, which is more funding, you know, more money, a larger salary. And I think in a lot of ways, while that's important, it's not, people very quickly forget when they receive a pay increase. What they remember and what they'll see every day is if the town administrator is present, if the town administrator is being responsive, both to employees and to the public and available. And, and, and when that modeling happens, you know, I think really good things can happen. People respond to that as employees.
How do you hold people accountable?
Well, I think I'd say, most importantly, I think it's, it's not, when there's an issue, it's not hiding the ball, so to speak. So when there, when there is, when, when someone does something wrong or, you know, wrong, a hard word, incorrect, making sure that, that it's addressed quickly and, you know, and, and right away and, and that it's nipped in the bud when there is an issue. It's very tempting sometimes to let a smaller issue goes because it's uncomfortable to deal with it. And then that mushrooms into a larger issue because someone thinks that maybe it doesn't matter or maybe someone thinks that an employee isn't, thinks that management isn't paying attention, doesn't see it. I think it's really important to, you know, hide the ball, set the expectations clear about what the expectations are. And when there is something that's incorrect, addressing it right away, addressing it quickly. And when there is something that's incorrect, addressing it right away, addressing it quickly and making sure that, you know, when you're doing a bi- or annual review, there shouldn't be any surprise either for the employee or the manager. Everything in there should have already been discussed, and this is just sort of a formal review of what's already happened. And so nothing's a surprise at that time.
Okay, let's move on to financial management. Um what is your um, you know, this this should should go without saying, but anyway, what's your uh what's who who what's your experience with preparing a uh a budget, municipal budget?
Sure. Um well, as I mentioned, so professionally, I have prepared three and now going on four uh municipal budgets.
What's your specific role in the preparation?
Yep, so really uh really from nuts to bolts, from the beginning to the end. Um and and what and what does that entail? Let's let's begin at the beginning. Um for this current fiscal year budget, um back more more than a year ago, reaching out and having direct conversations um with both uh elected and appointed uh policymakers in town and with department heads about what the needs are going forward. Um secondly, um putting uh ha- uh encouraging and requiring those department heads to directly put in their budget requests and um making sure that they take ownership over their own budget requests going forward. Then bring then putting that information together. Um at the same time as their information, um as as the department heads are putting in their requests, um making sure um uh and doing the independent work on my own with some assistance from uh from our town accountant on revenues and looking at um where we expect our revenues to do, to be doing long term modeling of five to 10 years ahead of time about what we expect local receipts to be. What um taxation is and in particular, what we expect um uh new growth to be uh uh when compared with the last and compared with general um regional economic trends and getting a good a getting a good revenue number. And it's obviously matching up that revenue with those with those spending uh requests and seeing where we are. And beginning to um present um policy options for the the board selectmen, the policymaker of the town, the policymaking board of the town, to determine where on the revenue side might you want to make changes? Um where uh you you know, do uh you, the board, want to um tax to the levy? If so, do you want to to the um, do you want to spend all of that this year? Or reserve fund uh or or put some into reserve fund and keep it for stabilization in the future? And and likewise, on the spending side, um uh what policy goals do you, the policymaking board of the town, have? What does our transfer station, what should it look like? What should emergency dispatch look like? And are you okay with um implement with the possibility of implementing this efficiency um from from a global policy perspective? Briefly, obviously, it's um getting that policy document together, getting buy in um from the board of selectmen. And then also uh the what's the advisory committee in Hanover, obviously, uh finance committee in in Whitman. Uh and then um shepherding it through the process, getting it through those those advisory committee or finance committee meetings, getting it through town meeting, and then obviously just the the sort of fundamental work of implementing it. Making sure that it's that it's fully, um once it's approved by town meeting, that it's um fully implemented in the town's accounting software and doing the management. Uh one thing we've we've done in in Hanover successfully has been producing monthly budget reports to the board of selectmen. And uh the invite, the members of the uh finance advisory committee who are interested in receiving them um to see where we're doing against benchmarks, both on revenue and expenditures.
Okay, so you that's how you do your budget monitoring through that process?
It is.
For you and for them. Uh let's go back. I want I want to get into some real nitty gritty finance stuff. In your preparation of the budget, what's most what's the most important element uh of your budget? Would you say i- i- in determining how much to spend, well, determine determining how much to spend, what's what's the most important thing?
Revenue.
Okay.
Where 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 the revenue is, you can't spend what you don't have, right? So so knowing what your revenues are, you know, revenue is one thing that I think sometimes not through anyone's fault per se, but I think it's sometimes something that is really is not given the attention it deserves in municipal uh in municipal government, municipal financing, making sure that uh the town's revenue numbers are solid, that is based on actual historical information with um with local receipts, that a- and with margins, you know, with 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 um so to account for things like COVID, right, things that will happen that we don't expect. Um and making sure, you know, that the tax revenue um is predictable and making sure that we really know and with data what um what new growth really is likely to be. Uh you know, so so I I I think that's that's the number one. And again, it's sometimes given short shrift, but it's uh I think in many ways, the most important budgeting decision.
Okay, good. What uh what um in terms of uh tax revenue? Uh let's talk about proposition two and a half. How does proposition two and a half work?
Sure. Well, there's there's two parts of it. Number one um is that uh the uh property taxes, real estate, uh real estate and personal uh property taxes may not rise um more um than two and a half percent of each year's levy in going into the next year. And 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 one thing that I think um members of the public and one thing actually I've been really proud of um educating members of the of the finance advisory committee in Hanover and members, interested members of the public is that doesn't mean that it can't rise more than two and a half percent year over year. It means it can't rise more more than more than what you could have taxed to in the previous fiscal year. Um so there's that component of it. Then in addition to two and a half, there's obviously new growth, as we discussed.
Yep.
additions, um additions, et cetera, um improvements to to real estate. Um and um i- as it goes without saying, with this board, this board knows that operational, operating uh expenditures may not rise above that without an operating override. Then separate separately from that, of course, there's the element of proposition two and a half that has to do with debt exclusions and one time exclusions for particular capital projects rather than a general operating override of the town's two and a half um uh levy.
In looking back at Whitman's um uh use of uh property taxes over the last eight or so years, uh there were a number of years uh uh you know, at the early part of that in which there was excess levy capacity um that uh ended up being there. Uh how does something like that happen?
I noticed that. Um it in a polite way, uh it it can happen in in two ways. One, it can be a a a um knowledge, a knowledge based decision based on the on the board of selectmen's decision. That is to say, and and that is a uh explicit decision, I'll use an example, that's an explicit decision that the board of uh selectmen in Hanover has made for this current fiscal year um because of the ongoing COVID crisis. So um it can be an explicit um decision by the board to not tax to the levy limit in order to, you know, almost almost always, in order to give relief to the taxpayers because of something going on like COVID, for example, in this fiscal year. The the other way it can happen is um because no one's really paying attention in that that explicit decision um was not brought to the board and um explicitly uh the board was, you know, given a choice. Um the the primary, I I i- unless it's an explicit decision by the board of selectmen, I think it's very important not to have that excess levy. Number one, and and one thing that we've um, one thing that I was instrumental in and that we've been really successful for many years in situative doing is that the entire excess levy of each year goes automatically through a town meeting article to the stabilization fund. So with the acknowledgement that, okay, we don't want to spend these, you know, if there's a specific um knowledge based uh decision by the board that we don't want to spend these monies this year. Nevertheless, um we do want to save it for that rainy day down the road. But we do want to save it for something like other post employment benefits um uh liability. So I I just to just to finalize that point, I you know, I think it's it's important that um I I do think it's important not to leave a lot of excess levy because someday the town will need it. And the longer you let it go, the more a tax increase will be when you really do need it.
Okay, good. What um that uh that uh decision to take it in any excess levy capacities there and put it towards the stabilization fund? Um i- is that, how 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 do you know about that approach? Uh I I mean, how is how does that approach, how is that approach um been developed?
Sure. Uh what was actually developed through um what we have in situ is a uh financial forecasting committee of which I was ex officio a member when I was chair of the advisory committee. Um and it's made up of several appointed leaders, some some board members, some volunteer board members, but several appointed leaders in the town, including as you might expect, the finance director, the treasurer, the treasurer collector, um the school's business manager, the school superintendent, et cetera. Um and we're examining, i- i- that's a committee that meets many times, uh several times every year to examine the overall fiscal and financial health of the community, doing revenue planning. And and out of that came um this more creative idea of how to um reserve, how to not um leave this excess levy on the table when we knew it would be needed in the future. Uh but also how to protect it and make sure it wasn't spent um sort of frivolously in the interim.
Is is this a policy?
Uh it it's uh it's not a formally adopted policy, but it is, um it has been adopted by town meeting after our advocating um every uh and now it's a informal policy.
Do you have policies?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, most certainly. Um I'll I'll come back to Hanover. Uh that that's one thing that we've been um that I've really worked um quite a lot on is making sure that we have robust and up to date board of selectmen policies in Hanover. In particular, um one initiative that I've been pursuing pretty aggressively are updating the town's board selectmen's policies regarding financial procedures um in an attempt to write the town as an AA two um uh rating with the credit rating agency. And uh we're aggressively updating those financial policies in order to attempt to bring it up to AA one or perhaps higher um to to show that our fiscal health is in order.
Have you sat in on a uh any bond rating uh uh presentations?
Most certainly, yep. I've been the presenter now for, we've done in my tenure in Hanover, we've done two large multimillion dollar bond issuances. We're about to do another one and I've been the um the primary contact with the bond rating agency.
What do the bond rating agencies look at when they when they're making the determination of rating? What are the factors that they consider?
Most recently, it it varies from year to year, you know, but most recently, um what the what Moody's, which is the um bond rating agency that the town of Hanover has been using for the last couple of years um ha- has been its other post employment benefit OPEB liability.
Okay.
And uh the strength overall of its financial policies um as adopted by the board of selectmen and the strength of the town's existing tax base. Now, there are limited things in the immediate term, obviously, there's long term economic development issues, but there are limited things, obviously, in the limit in the immediate term that uh leadership can do regarding um the ability of the town, uh regarding the strength of the tax base. Obviously, there's economic development and things, but in the immediate term, the issues, the way we've addressed that uh in Hanover has been achieving these economic policies and finding uh innovative funding mechanisms to demonstrate we're taking the OPEB liability seriously.
Okay, do you uh do you have the planner sit in on those uh bond ratings, broad rate, uh the presentations?
I I have, I have not, but I would um that it it actually most recently, um the town has not had a town planner for a year. Um but certainly, I would love it if they should be there. And certainly before that, um when we were prevar- preparing a a bond issuance documents, the town planner was intimately involved in um helping to uh collect and um put together uh the demo information for the town.
Okay, hard to have them there if they don't exist.
Exactly, that's true.
Uh that would be a trick. Um all right, we've talked about forecasting, you have uh how long a forecast you have in Hanover?
So so right now, we have a five year plan. Um I've been working on getting a longer plan. I I I sometimes think
Capital or operating?
Both.
Okay.
Both.
Okay.
So so capital is actually a six year plan, so that the current budget plus five years.
Yep.
Operating five years both for revenue and expenditures. I've toyed with going longer. I I do think there might be some limited um there might be limited utility in doing that because there are so many factors that we just don't know about. For example, who 10 years ago might have uh predicted COVID. But um nevertheless, I you know, I I I think it's certainly five years is uh is a great place to start.
Bush administration predicted it 15 years ago, but that's
Well, true, true.
Um uh what, do you have a water or sewer in Hanover?
We do have water, uh no, but we do have a water in.
What goes into your water rates? Uh what do you consider within your water rate setting?
Sure. Um I'm glad you asked that, actually, because we uh one of the initiatives that um that I took on uh now, a little less than a year ago, was that the water rate, the water rates he- which are set by the board of selectmen in the town ever who serve as the water commissioners, had not been revised for several years. Um for maybe maybe predictable reasons of it was it was politically um infeasible to do so. Um but w- w- we had great success a little bit less than a year ago. Um I took lead in in producing the financial models, obviously with input from our DPW director of demonstrating um in in the interim, while the water rates were not going up, uh the town rightfully so made several investments in the water production system that really needed to be made um to reduce um uh harmful chemicals i- in the water and to uh increase the um the flow that was that was possible. Uh and and replacing wells that needed to happen. But the piece that hadn't happened previously was a clear understanding from in particular, the board of selectmen and and the the public at large, that in order to pay for these improvements that everyone, investments that everyone knew needed to happen that it did need to be some modest rate increases.
Okay.
Wait, we uh briefly, the way we did it was create a model and create options for the board to demonstrate we need this much in revenue to support these needed capital projects.
Okay.
Like to, you know, here are your options on how to do that.
So you look at capital, what else, what go- what else goes into your rates?
Sure, so certainly, so if certainly the primary thing is capital, obviously, the the ongoing operating budget is 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 key too. And in particular, that's relatively stable in Hanover, and I think in most communities. Um the the uh you know, making sure that your indirect rate for payments back to um to the is correct and appropriate. Um making sure that you're uh fully accounting for the staff that really is needed. Um chemicals, you know, one thing that a lot of
You're all set.
Yeah, sorry.
You said the magic words.
Okay.
All right, school financing. What's your uh experience with uh dealing with the the school finance laws, chapter 70?
Sure.
At school spending and uh any uh any experience with the regional school district?
I do. Uh Hanover is a member of South Shore Regional um School District of which um Whitman in as well is as well vocational school. Um we also have several students who go to Norfolk Virtual School, as I know Whitman does. Um the I I it it Hanover is different, um and yet rela- in some ways related to Whitman's situation. Um we have our uh the the town has its own school department. Um that relationship um with the school leadership is in just institutionally fraught, regardless of personalities, it's institutionally likely to be fraught. Um because in a a common way of looking at it, I think incorrect, but a common way of looking at it is to look at a limited pie and how that pies is split up. Uh the the experience I have um I think has been uh to make sure it's come back to that collaboration and really taking that seriously um with with what we spoke about earlier. Um we've created a really excellent relationship with this with the school committee and by extension, the superintendent and the business uh manager for the Hanover schools. Um again, that's a relationship that is has not always been good in the past. But we've been able to um improve it through trust, through making sure that We've been able to improve it through trust, through making sure that we trust each other. Making sure, you know, there are always going to be disagreements because, you know, schools everywhere in Massachusetts and all over the, all over the country are going to ask for more than maybe what the town leadership may may think is is affordable. But I think building that trust, having trust in in each, in particular, the schools and school entities' numbers and what really is going into their budget is critical. One other piece I'd mentioned with respect to school financing is, you mentioned chapter 70, is the revenues. And again, the revenues, I think, in being creative about revenues are one area that is often given short shrift in municipal financing. So that's one thing that worked very closely and collaborated with with the school superintendent and the school's business manager in Hanover in coming up with a predictable and and as accurate as possible prediction for what chapter 70 local aid would be going forward in from the state.
And let's move on to, I think you've answered all of my finance questions. Moving on to project management, what what's been the most complex project that you've managed?
Sure. Well, I'd say probably the most complex, I'd sort of mentioned it a little bit in passing before, but it's related to finances, but but it really touches on general management as well. One, one thing that prior to my arrival in Hanover that had been happening was that the town had a very large, on average, tax increase year-over-year for about 15 years. And perhaps equally troubling, I guess, is that it fluctuated pretty rapidly, wildly back and forth. And the reason for that was several reasons, but primarily because of, put this delicately, not not terrific management of debt. So the the town had made several investments, but had not really managed that debt and those debt exclusions well. So one of the things I I wanted to focus on and get buy-in from the, from the Board of Selectmen and from the community at large, from the Advisory Finance Committee, was working to bring both lower that tax, that average for the single-family home in Hanover, for what the average tax increase was year-over-year, and also to make it more predictable and 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 make it more predictable. So lowering it, not only, you know, it had been at approximately 4% because of several debt overrides and this debt management issue, bringing it down now below 2% and making it so that going forward, it will be predictable and approximately 2% for several years. And and the, and the way achieved that was was severalfold. One, making sure that we were doing the absolute best debt management that we could and making sure that we were, we as the town, we the best interest rates possible and particularly in this interest rate environment, doing the, doing those financial policies that I mentioned. And making sure that we got the absolute best credit rating that we could. And the other piece of it, you know, it's, so so that's, that's that piece. Other pieces was being creative with revenues. So in particular, the PEG access, the Cable Access Fund, having certain employees paid out of that that you might not automatically think would be appropriate from there, but certainly are appropriate under the law. Be being creative with some other funding sources and that's sort of the revenue piece. And then separately on the, on the expenditure piece, finding efficiency. So one thing that that the town is now entering now is a regional dispatch center. And I know Whitman is doing that for FIRE now, but putting all those pieces together to achieve and and then demonstrating that to the policymaking board of the town, the selectmen, getting their buy-in and achieving it going forward.
Okay. So have you, have you had an opportunity to work in any like technology conversions, capital projects, anything of that sort that we could look and say, okay, there's X amount of dollars that's been committed to this and now we need to implement that and there's milestones and scheduling and managing of something like that?
Sure. I have, there's, there's a, one project that I've worked extensively on is a large $32 million renovation to the town's primary elementary school. That involved moving from an older building to a newer building and doing the renovation on that. Doing the, I wasn't the owner's project manager on it, but certainly worked closely with that owners, with that private, private owners project manager on the day-to-day management. Attended and participated in weekly construction meetings to make sure we're on schedule. Did the debt management that that we talked about with that, worked with Houston School Building Authority, et cetera. And one other, one other, one other project that we're now ongoing now, in addition, is the possibility of by, of building a new fire station in town. So in in that case, it's sort of a whole other set of different but related issues, making sure that we have the land. It's a land that's in a very complicated tax title. I'm intimately involved in getting that land and acquiring that land through tax title and figuring out with volunteer boards what that site should look like going forward.
Okay. Are you MCPPO certified?
I am, I am, yep. Am I actually appointed as the chief procurement officer for the town of Hanover to and handle all that?
Okay, good. The, you started talking about economic development, you put, you gave us a lot of information already, but I wanted to dig down a little bit. If you became the town administrator in Whitman, Whitman, what would be your approach to bringing new businesses and new investment into the community? And what what opportunities do you see with based upon the, what you know of Whitman?
Sure. Well, I think the fundamentals of women are really strong and I mentioned that earlier. And I think with some relatively small tweaks, we could have great success in Whitman together. With with my experience that I've already had, I mentioned the tax increment financing plan that have been pretty instrumental in helping to implement for the town of Hanover, bringing $40 million in private investment. And then just recently, try, try again on our second try achieving a Massworks state grant of $1.3 million to help support the infrastructure around that project and the infrastructure in general.
Did you write that grant?
I I I actually did it. I did not, was not the direct writer of the grant. I am helping to implement it now and making sure that the procurement is done. The writer of the grant, the primary writer of the grant actually was a consultant, but certainly worked with directly with him.
Lynn?
No, April Anderson, actually.
Oh, April, okay, yeah.
Yeah, April, yeah. So, you know, so I I think that, you know, the the opportunity for Whitman to achieve a Massworks grant, I think, is very likely put, given with some hard work put in. That, you know, in particular, I would look at, you know, certainly in general, the Rhodes and Whitman, the Massworks grant, many, most of the Massworks grants this year were for infrastructure improvements. And absolutely Whitman would be a prime candidate for those funds, I think, going forward. And in particular, around the commuter rail station. Certainly, the governor's office and executive office of the Housing and Economic Development at the state level are very interested in encouraging transit-oriented oriented development. One other thing that I've had some experience with in situ, with my volunteer hat on, is smart growth zoning, Mass General Law is chapter 40. In making zoning changes around the transit, the transit hub, in this case, obviously, the commuter rail station to i- in order to allow some denser development. And as a result, the municipal, the town of Whitman could be eligible for up to $600,000. It depends on, you know, a whole variety of factors, but certainly the town could be eligible for a large chunk to help support that development. And then, as the board may know, it's in addition to that $3,000 guaranteed if one is, if the town's awarded a 40-yard grant per unit, per housing unit created. So I think, you know, I certainly think there's opportunities in Whitman too. I I know there's some relatively underutilized land around the commuter rail station there. And I think that is something that we we could achieve some success on and really some great success.
Do you have any experience with brownfields developments?
Not directly a brownfield. The, we haven't actually identified it as a brownfield for legal reasons. But one could certainly consider it as such. The, there's a, there's a large contaminated site that is shared both by Hanover and Hanson called the National Fireworks Site that folks may be familiar with. Most of the property is actually owned by the town of Hanover. Have a quite extensive experience working with the Attorney General's Office. There is a trust from the polluters of that in doing the cleanup there and thinking through what the future development of that site may be.
Okay, right. Okay. Anybody else have questions on economic development? I didn't want to. Dan, did you? You have to unmute, Dan. Nope.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We have a a building, it's called Park Ave School. It's on, of course, on Park Street. It was an old elementary school that the regional gave, you know, gave it up and gave it back to Whitman. It was donated to Whitman for educational purposes only, so it's still in some type of a family deed or whatever. And plus, we have a couple of areas that, you know, like the town dump, the old town dump that's been recapped and what we could do with that. And again, you said that the land next to the, that if the town MBTA station. There's areas that have issues with, again, with, need to be cleaned up. And the Park Ave School, which needs to be dealt with lawyers and family and make it clean for what Whitman can do. Do you have any insight on what we could do with those properties to at least bring some revenues to the town of Whitman? And I'm thinking I'd love to see a solar field somewhere to take to take the stress off of like town buildings as far as lighting goes. We could save monies there and use that monies in other areas. So I'm just wondering if you have any insight on what those
Sure. Well, I think the, you know, all, so many, as you mentioned, so many, so much of the time, some of these issues, oh, I'm sorry. But so much of the time, some of these issues are are have legal, legal concerns. And you know, the the best way to achieve success, I think, despite legal impediments is hard work, is working with town council. There are ways to achieve success despite deed restrictions. That's one thing we, the town of Hanover is fortunate enough to have several trusts, of which, some of which may not be used for their original purpose. And so that is something that I have some experience on in navigating how those funnies, how those monies could be used for another purpose. Certainly, at the end of the road, if there was no legal avenue, direct legal avenue for success, the, the, there's always the option of pursuing special legislation, which I think would allow another redevelopment there. But in the, in the immediate terms, in particular with the Park Avenue School, I'd noticed that school myself being around in town, visiting with folks and in the immediate term, you know, if the building is sound, you know, structurally, certainly you could pursue another educational purpose. For example, perhaps a daycare, perhaps some other educational purpose, which would still meet the immediate needs, perhaps bring some revenue into the town while the other legal issues are addressed. One other thing I'd mentioned, you know, we talked a lot about grants that the town could be eligible for. And certainly, I I've noticed, you know, and towns to be commended for really having a lot of success with the state's Green Communities Grant. That's something that Hanover also has had quite a lot of success with. And certainly to the point on having solar fields or wind, if it's, you know, approved and appropriate and and acceptable to the, you know, the residents of town, are areas where there's absolutely a large grant, a large grant opportunities. And in many cases, you know, may well be the best use of land that may be contaminated. And to put it to, you know, to an economic benefit for the town.
Thank you.
Any other? Justin?
Yeah, you you touched on briefly your experience with getting a 40-yard development in situ. What would kind of, I I believe that was that contracted out with MAPC?
Correct, yeah.
A number of years ago. Any other experience with overlay type zoning or those kind of reforms?
No, so mostly there's, it's a similar situation, actually. In in that situation in Greenbush, which is a commuter rail station on the Greenbush Line, you know, the end of the Greenbush Line, some very similar situation to the Whitman Station in that the surrounding area, some of it, well, the dump was right there, transfer station. Now we, now we like to call it transfer station, right? But the dump was there. In in situ, underutilized industrial areas were there. And and so doing some of that rezoning, you know, has attracted some outside investment. One thing that, you know, and again, you know, certainly that would be appropriate and applicable to the Whitman Station, all of those factors. One thing that situ didn't do, but again, that Hanover's done to great success is considering a tax increment financing plan, especially if there is a large or a series of of large property owners to encourage that investment while you're also at the same time going on the track of attempting to get state grants. You know, having the community take the bull by the horns, so to speak, itself and encouraging that investment. So, you know, and one other piece I'd mentioned with respect to the situ, the Greenbush situation was while there was some, initially, there were, there was some difficulty with residents in that community in that particular neighborhood not feeling included in the initial conversations. I'm proud actually of the role the advisory committee had in in being chair at that time of bringing these, these members of the community into the conversation and getting their concerns heard and making some modifications to the rezoning that they were happy with to get everyone on board with the change.
Thank you. Away from economic development. Let's get into personnel management. You mentioned that you've, you've been the lead on DPW negotiations and at the table in other. What's your approach to collective bargaining?
Sure. Well, certainly the collaborative piece we talked about. So I think at the baseline, it's ensuring that the conversations that happen and the negotiations that happen in collective bargaining stay there and do not bleed out into into the, you know, into the the workplace as a whole, especially with the, with the, you know, smaller workforce like Hanover, like Whitman. You need to work with these folks away from the table too and set the bargaining aside while you're not doing that bargaining. We've had great success in that and and I, and the reason I think we've had that success is clearly and honestly communicating what the financial situation is of the town, what the, what management's desires are to see in a new contract. And to be frank and honest about what is is possible and and what is likely to be approved for for a new contract, laying those things out early, not playing, you know, games that sometimes might be attractive to do, but in the end, I think they create mistrust and 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 that mistrust, again, can bleed out into the workplace as a whole. And you really need to stay at the table and 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 focus on those issues at the table.
Okay. You already talked a little bit about performance evaluations and evaluating employees, so I'm all set on that. What's your, what's been your experience with hiring people and what's been your experience with disciplining employees?
Sure. With, in particular, certainly my previous positions with the state did quite a decent number of hires in Hanover. I've had to think here for a moment. I've done four hires. So I, I, I'm a, I'm a strong believer in first being the lay of the land. When you, when you have a hire, in particular, if there's an opportunity for promotion for someone and knowing beforehand if that person has an interest and desire to be promoted or if they're happy in their position, which is fine. You know, it's it's fine if someone doesn't want to be promoted. Having a clear understanding of what their desires are for their career and what their skill sets are. Um, having a clear understanding of what their desires are for their career and what their skillsets are. So closely monitoring that, thinking about that succession planning before the vacancy happens. And then when the vacancy does happen, you know, it's not always appropriate, but I, I do think it's almost always appropriate to really have a full search and really get as many qualified candidates as you can. There are a lot of um, really great online tools, both through the Massachusetts Municipal Association, through others to get, to get that out and, and to have a full and, and open search.
Good. Uh, and employee discipline?
Yes, employee discipline. Um, well, so I, I, I come back to I think first of all, so many disciplinary issues can be avoided before it gets to a really adversarial point. And, and I briefly mentioned again, um, my strong belief to not, you know, so to speak, hide the ball, to be really clear upfront when there is an issue that it needs to be resolved, that it needs to be done differently, and that you're going to be checking and expecting them to do it differently. I, I think that in ninety-five percent of the time, people want to be happy at work. They want to succeed at their jobs. They want to contribute in a positive way. And most people will respond to that. Um, to the extent they don't, um, I'm through that. I've had to go through that once um in uh in uh, in having, having an employee be terminated. It's not, but sometimes occasionally it needs to happen.
Okay, all right. Um, sort of a lightning round here because we're sort of running out of time, but um what do you, um, you know, your municipal uh junkie, if you will, you've been at it for ten years between uh Situate and uh and, and your time in Hanover. Uh, what is the municipal trend that uh excites you the most?
Uh, I'd say the commitment to economic development and the return to having vibrant um downtown economic areas.
Okay, good. Um, let's talk about citizen relations. Uh, you uh, you know, you'd be coming into Whitman. Um, you don't live in Whitman. How would you engage with the citizens and how would you uh uh become immersed in the community?
Sure. Well, I, I, I think there's a couple pieces of that, uh, but I'll try to be brief. Uh, number one, certainly, um, you know, I would be a fresh face um with the approval of this board. I'd certainly, you know, I've already sort of gone out informally and done that listening tour with folks who I'd already known. We've been my friends and acquaintances, both professionally and personally, in Whitman and getting their sense of where the town is. I, I'd want to go out and do that with more folks in the community. Um, informally and, you know, with this board's approval formally too. I think it's, I think it's a good way to show there's a fresh take on things. Um, and uh, you know, uh, I, I think doing that both in person, informally, one-on-one is really important, going out into the community and then also encouraging folks to come back in. I think that has multiple benefits, but not least of which, um, not through anyone's fault, but when you have someone in the role for a long time, like, like Frank was, um, the, you know, certain ideas may have been, you know, wrong fifteen years ago, ten years ago, and they haven't been revisited since. But maybe the situation's changed and maybe they are right now. And I think the um I think the opportunity of having a new town manager allows for those voices and those ideas to come back, come back or new ideas to come up that maybe hadn't been considered again. And I'll just briefly mention the social media piece. Uh, having an accessible website, I think is critical key so that residents, business owners can know and can easily go to the website and social media and know, you know, I just want to do this thing. I just want to get this building permit. How do I do this quickly?
So that's actually hits upon my next uh part of that, that topic was how do you communicate in form? So, social media and web, okay. Um, how do you um, how do you, in, in terms of Hanover? Uh, you, you mentioned that you've built up a relationship with the school department that wasn't always uh necessarily the best. Uh, I, how do you enhance communication and collaboration with the business community, state government, other communities? Uh, how do you, how do you go about doing that?
Sure. Um, well, a couple of things I'll say briefly with, with the business community, like I mentioned, um, you know, I've already gone out and had several conversations with members of the business community. I'd certainly want to engage with uh any organizations, you know, that are working together collectively with the business community. And in particular, um, would certainly want within, certainly within the first um month or two to um have a conversation with the largest um commercial or industrial uh landowners in town, just to find out where they are, what are, what they want from the town. Are there things that they want to do that they're already thinking about with their properties? That um, you know, that maybe they need some assistance from the town with, that they need to get a roadblock um through. Uh, with the state and, you know, regional government, county government. Um, I'd say really uh continuing the relationships already happened. As I mentioned, I worked uh, uh, for the state for several years, worked in the governor's budget office, um, have, know several players regionally. I've worked very closely um with the treasurer, Tom O'Brien, and have worked very closely with him over the years, in particular, most recently um with uh, with COVID nineteen and um attracting the maximum amount of dollars for the town as possible. Um, and, and, and then I think with some of my peers, I, I do already have a lot of those relationships, in particular, I'm the designee to the Mayflower Municipal Health Group, which of course is also the, for, which is of course also the health provider for um for Whitman. And know those folks. I'm also the designee in my role as treasurer collector with the Plymouth County Retirement Association. So I already know um a lot of those, a lot of those players.
Uh, what's the relationship look like with, with you and a board of selectmen, with this board of selectmen, if you were appointed? What? Well, how do you communicate? What do you see? How would you determine the relationship to be successful?
Sure. Um, well, I think it's I think it's a given, but I think it's still really important just to sort of upfront, talk about the expectation of, of roles for, for both uh myself as the town administrator and the five of you as board members, in particular. Uh, uh, it, it from, from the, from the board, making sure that you folks are of the town, that you are the democratically elected um policymakers of the town and that the, the critical function in support of you um that I can do is um presenting concise, timely and complete uh information to you on, on whatever the topic is at hand and presenting, if desired, uh, several, at least, you know, two or three policy options on how to move forward. Um, and the cons, the likely consequences of those options. Um, you know, I think it's really important that it, to reiterate that it is not the town administrator's job to um come up to um to make the decision on policy, but rather to inform the board to get their pol, your policy directive and then to implement it going forward. Um, so I think that's, I, I, I think that's the formal communication, the informal communication. Uh, and one thing I do always and have practiced in Hanover and certainly into Whitman would be um, you know, the open door policy is really needed with board members. Um, you know, whether, you know, some board members will want to have a regular meeting and that's great. And to talk about what's on their mind and get some more information on a, on a, on a policy um decision that's upcoming. And some more, more members may just want to do catch as catch can and, um, you know, that's, that's all fine. But to make sure you're accessible and that you're there as a resource to do research and to um, and possibilities for the board to make decisions on.
Great. Uh, I think that completes all my questions. Board members.
I've all said he's answered my questions.
Okay. Anybody else? All set. All right, Lincoln. I, I think we're all set. Uh, if you just want to, uh, you know, you want to have a few closing remarks?
Sure. No, thank you again very much for the opportunity. Um, really exciting to me. A, as I said, I think um, I think we could really do great things together in Whitman, and I hope I have the opportunity to work with you folks. Uh, I think my um municipal experience in particular in finance and economic development um would be uh, an asset to the town. Uh, and you know, one, one thing that um was confirmed for me was both I'm watching your previous meetings and communicating with other members of the community and hearing about you folks and then interacting with you here today is seeing um, you know, how, how well you folks, you know, are, work well together as board and, and are, you know, interested in those issues. So I think um I think we could work well together. I think I'd have a lot to bring and hope I have the opportunity to work with you folks.
Very good. Thanks, Lincoln.
Thanks so much. Have a great day. Thank you.
You too. All right. One sec. Need a minute? Ready to go?
Let's do it.
You're all, you know, all right, let's do it.
Somewhere.
Mike? Mike, you there?
Second. How's that?
Well, we can hear you. We can't see you.
Well, that's weird. It says stop video. Um.
Huh. Yeah, it, it shows here, actually, it shows here, unless you're just in a black hole somewhere. Um, it's uh um, you want to try it again?
Yeah, bear with me here. That's strange. Um.
Yeah, because it's showing here that your camera is on.
Yeah, uh, yeah, let me try and uh get back in. That's odd. All right, I'll probably come back in, okay?
Yep.
Go get a drink while he's doing that.
All right. Technology has its limitations. There we go. Now we can see you. We can't hear you though now. Unmute.
There we go.
All right.
And it's not a bad thing not to be able to see me.
Is he on?
Yeah, he's there. All right.
Well.
Shall we?
Welcome, Mr. Gubbin. Uh, my name's Dan Sawwich. I'm the acting chair and uh, our board members are here. You have uh Randy Almatina is here, Justin Evans, Carl Kowalski and Brian Vazanson will be uh listening in on your interview.
Okay, good afternoon.
Yep.
All right, Mike, we're uh, we have a bunch of questions. We uh, we blocked off about an hour, a little bit more and you know, you can see that we're running a little bit behind, but uh, we'll get through these questions with you, give you an opportunity to answer all of them. Uh, but why don't you start with telling us uh about yourself and why you're interested in the position? Uh, we've seen your resume, so we know all the positions you've held, but maybe just tell us how you, you know, got into the town administrator business and um you know, what you, again, uh, why you're in Whitman?
Sure. Um, so I started my career back in the early nineties, very early nineties. I actually um, my next door neighbor had worked for Paul Songus for about ten years when he was in the House and the Senate. I ended up going to work for Paul in his presidential race, like I said, in the early nineties. Ended up going to work for the Boston City Council for a counselor for a number of years in Boston, then went to work for a state representative out of Lowell, a young kid at the time. He was, I think, twenty-one or twenty-two years old. Uh, from that point, I went to um, I worked for the city of Lowell in the anti-tobacco program for a little bit and then went to Greater Lowell Tech where I spent eleven years uh working for the tech system. Um, and from that point, I became the assistant city manager in Lowell and on to Shirley for the past roughly three years at this point. You know, to be honest with you, when I was working for Greater Lowell Tech, um, you know, I'd gone from jobs between the city council in Boston as a in the state house as, you know, working as an aide and, and those types of position and and then um at Greater Lowell Tech essentially became, operated really as a chief of staff there uh and had the opportunity to go to the city of Lowell. And really, and, and that was when I really found, you know, what I enjoyed. Uh, being the assistant city manager, I knew this was the business that I wanted to stay in. Um, running the day-to-day operations of at the time, the fourth largest city, I think maybe Cambridge may have just recently took over as a fourth, but um, and then in getting the job in Shirley, I was really interested in, at that point, um, being the person, if you will, um, of, you know, being the one in charge where, where things were fully on your shoulders. Um, and in terms of Whitman, um, for me, it's, you know, I'm a city guy. Um, that's where I was born and raised in Lowell. I committed the mortal sin of moving to Chumster a, a few years ago. Um, but I'm really a city guy and, and going through Whitman and down and through this area, you know, I look at your, your, your town hall. It's not unlike the city of Lowell. It's a, it's a, you know, the brick building. Um, that really is what intrigues me. Um, your downtown area, you have life down there. You have life on Route eighteen, the development. And Shirley is, is nice. Uh, the people are fantastic. They've been great to me. The board of selectmen have been great to me. Uh, it's a very rural community. Um, and for me, like I said, you know, we used to receive the nine-one-one uh text all night long in the city of Lowell. And that's, that's what I enjoy. And I think that Whitman would be a great fit for me uh with everything that you have going on.
Okay, great. Uh, how do you see this fitting into the, so maybe just answer that. How do you see this fitting into the arc of your career?
So at this point, I'm fifty-three, going on fifty-four in May. Um, you know, I'd like to just, you know, the you can go when you're, when you're sixty-two, if you will. Um, you know, I'd like to really find my last job. Um, my wife and I are looking to transition down here in Plymouth. Um, and, you know, we want to be down in this area. I'm not a complicated person. Um, you know, I, we, I was uh, my first boss uh made me start investing when I was very, very young. Uh, so financially for me, you know, I'm not sitting here, okay, well now I've got to jump to another job that's one seventy-five and then two hundred at that point or whatever it may be. Um, you know, we're comfortable where we are in life right now.
Okay, all right. Well, let's get into uh, let's get into the role of a town administrator and start to talk to you about uh the um um, you know, how you manage an organization. What do you um, you know, we're interested in hearing your management and uh leadership uh style. What's that, what's that look like?
So it's a very open door policy. Um, it's um, when I was at Greater Lowell Tech, uh, people used to laugh. They used to say that um, you know, there should have been a sign on my door that said therapy sessions. Um, you know, people came in and talked to me all the time. Uh, sometimes it was work-related and sometimes it was just what people had going on in their life. Um, and so I'm, I'm a huge, huge believer that, you know, you need to have an, an open door policy. Life's tough, right? We all have to pay our mortgage. It's obviously even more complicated in this day and age of COVID here. Um, so I think just being able to have the employees know that if there's an issue going on, they can come and talk to me. Um, that I'll listen to them and hopefully I can, I can help them out now, you know, and sometimes you can't, right? But I think you have to be upfront and honest with them too. And when I came to uh the town of Shirley, there was a lot of turmoil. Uh, not only just within the community, um, they had gone through a recall um before I got there, but also internally within the building. Um, there was some divisions combined with the fact that they felt that they were just um, you know, a ping pong ball and in a political uh game going on. And so I think kind of building that trust with the staff, um, there were, like I said, there were some divisions here and there within the group. And for me, probably one of the things that I'm most proud of is that the, 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 the group of people that we work with in town hall, they eat lunch every day together. Um, and, and that speaks volumes for me. That's probably I have to chalk up there as one of my biggest accomplishments um with dealing with and trying to straighten out some of the issues in, in the town.
Okay, how do you do that?
Um, once again, it's just, you know, the employees knowing that, letting them know that I have their back, um, that I will, I will be with them. Um, you know, there seemed to be kind of a lot of, like I said, you know, um, people felt that they were thrown under the bus. They were used sometimes in, in whatever battles were going on. And, you know, and, and I told them right from the get-go, it didn't matter and everybody, not just the employees here, but I told everybody, it did not matter to me. everybody, not just the employees here, but I told everybody, it did not matter to me what went on in the past, right? I, I wasn't here. Wasn't part of it. Obviously I had to be aware of it so I could make decisions, um, you know, having all of my facts, but I said, from now on, it's a different day and age. We're moving forward based on, you know, what we are dealing with now, not with what happened in the past. And, and it, it took time. It's taken, you know, probably it's taken two and a half years. But the staff knows that they can come and talk to me. One of the, you know, just over the last 10 months here, right, as we all went through the, the beginning of this in March, and you always want to try and do do things that are uniform, right? Because if you start cherry picking and doing one thing for one employee and do it for another, then you really run into problems, right? Not only from a union perspective, but just, you know, from a personal standpoint, right? People don't feel like they can trust you or anything like that. So one of the things that we did at the beginning was that we did everything that was uniform. And unfortunately, you know, that doesn't always fit everybody. As we moved along, we opened up early to the general public back in June, um, which, you know, the employees were a little hesitant, a little nervous about that, but I reassured them that we took every precaution, every step that we could. And, you know, as we went through the summer and we just closed, we went red back around the middle of, um, middle of November because of the prison. We closed the general public again, but they were thankful that we actually opened up because it gave us a little bit of normalcy. But having said that, I went, you know, you could see that you could see people, the change in people around mid-August or so. We have a number of young employees with kids and everything, and you could see the whole school thing kind of creeping back, that underlying kind of anxiety that they were having. And so I talked to the, the head of the union and, and we worked out an agreement, um, that we'll take things on an individual basis. That, you know, people are just under a lot of stress at this point. And so I told the employees after I, you know, worked it out with the head of the union, that if you have an issue, you have an issue with daycare, some, in some cases, right, even with your parents and taking care of your parents in this day and age. Come talk to me. We'll figure it out. Everybody had brand new laptops, um, through CARES money. So they could work remotely. And, and we had staff working two days from home back in the spring, two days in, and we just canceled Fridays altogether. They were doing their work. Um, you know, I trusted them. Work was getting done. So I felt that if, if they had an issue, we can figure it out here. Um, and, and I think that goes a long way.
Let's talk about your open door, uh, policy, uh, and you've reiterated that several times. The, um, accessibility is a key tenet of, uh, of leadership. And, you know, I suppose of management as well. What, um, but being a town administrator, as you know, uh, often means that issues and problems are coming at you from all sides. And it's tough sometimes to get that work done with this open door. Have you ever closed down your accessibility in order to, to do that?
I know, no, definitely not. Um, because like I said, you know, if I'm, if, you know, let's say I'm under the gun for, um, Complete Streets, right, I need my tier three submittal or something like that. You know, and I have an employee, they're obviously coming to see me because it's weighing on them and they need to talk to me about something. And, you know, if that means I've got to stay past 4:30 and finish my Complete Streets, uh, application, then that's what has to happen. Once again, I think it's extremely important that the staff members know that they can come and talk to me. And, and even in the city of Lowell, right? So in Shirley, I mean, I have a total, there's about 50 employees with everybody, right? So it's a little easier, but in Lowell where there's 32 departments and you have multiple staff members in departments, we still operate the same way. You have an issue, come see me. And we would have the fire chief, the police chief, the DPD director, and we would have clerks come and see me, DPW.
That's not good.
Sorry, frozen? There we go.
Yep, he came back, came back. We lost it a little bit, but I think you, I think you got your point out, Mike, uh, before you froze up.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Uh, do you consider, when you're doing, making, uh, when you're solving problems? Or how do you encourage collaboration within the organization?
So, you know, I'm not, um, I'm not a DPW director. I'm not a police chief. Um, I'm not a planner. Um, I'm really, I see myself as, as a facilitator and putting all the pieces together at the table that need to, to solve something. And, you know, we have, once again, going back to the city of Lowell, you had a lot of people that had a lot of expertise. Uh, and we would rely heavily upon those people. And surely it's the same way, right? It, it's a lot different because I don't have the 32 departments, so a lot of it falls on me, but you know, um, if, if there is an, an issue with finances, I'm bringing the treasurer, I'm bringing the accountant together and the assessor. Uh, and, and, you know, when I got there, the, the three really did not talk too much. And so I started a, a monthly meeting between the three, just so that every, because finances were a little difficult. We've run into a lot of challenges, uh, since I've been there. And so we just wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page. A lot of times in Shirley, I'll also bring, you know, some staff members that it's not truly related to them, but I think it's important for them to be able to hear what else is going on in the town. It's a, it's a small town, right? So everybody talks, there's always, you know, hearsay out there and everything like that. And I think it's just very helpful for the more knowledge that people, um, that people can have, the better off they are. I had an executive assistant. He was a young kid and I brought him into everything. I basically treated him as an assistant town administrator. Because for me, I thought it was beneficial for him to be able to learn, um, everything, uh, that we were dealing with on, on a daily basis. But that really is, is how I operate, that, you know, I'm sitting there at the table. Uh, if it's a water main break, uh, we obviously need to, you know, coordinate between water or sewer, um, police, fire, and all the parties involved and make sure everything is taken care of.
Uh, another, do you, do you consider, how do you go about instituting change within an organization? Do you need a Lowell or, uh, I suppose you, in Shirley, maybe you're taking the position that the, uh, changing the culture or changing the, um, sort of the tenor of the, the building. Uh, but how do, how do you go about instituting change?
So, so change, it's, it's always scary to people, right? Um, and so I think the more information that you can give to people and, and keep them apprised of what's happening, I think the better off you're going to be. For example, in the city of Lowell, we had five different departments. It was pretty structured in terms of, you know, you had a planning and development and they had a person who dealt with finances and other matters. You had DPW. Uh, we put a, an assistant director up there that was in charge of finance, but we had five departments in particular, um, that really kind of floated out there on their own. One being the Board of Health, uh, veterans, uh, what else? We have Council on Aging Library and, um, what was the fourth? The Rec Department, I'm sorry. Um, and you know, they always were coming to the CFO for financial issues, financial concerns, matters, whatever it may be. And, and each one, they were, they were operating kind of in silos. And so we ended up took a major, um, reorg. And it took probably about four or five months or so from really the start to the beginning, uh, the end of it. And, um, we had a standing weekly meeting between the CFO, the deputy, me, HR director, uh, the chief legal, uh, counselor, uh, the head of the law department. And we were constantly bringing in those department heads and letting them know what we were doing and what we were thinking and really asking them how they envision this working. And that was the biggest thing. Getting them to tell us and explain to us how they think it could work better and how it would be more efficient for them. Not just sitting there and saying, okay, yeah, we met with you once and that's it. Now we're gonna wave a magic wand from the ivory tower and, and you're gonna get whatever we tell you you're gonna get. So we really had to have the buy-in from them. And, and we reassured them too, that this was not an effort to basically cut jobs. And we told them that right from the beginning. That was not our intention. You know, it wasn't some type of, you know, tricky backroom consolidation to eliminate positions. And, and so I think, you know, that was extremely helpful, just having them involved throughout the entire process. In Shirley, for example, the Board of Selectmen, right, I'll never, ever, will never bring anything, um, in front of the Board of Selectmen and expect them to vote on, unless it was emergency, obviously. Vote on it that night. Usually, you know, we could go three, four, five, six meetings talking about the same subject, just so that everybody, um, has an understanding of what we're trying to do and what we're talking about. So nobody can come back and say, hey, you know, this is the first time I'm hearing of this, you know, you're trying to, you're trying to slip one through on us. You know, so really everything I do and have done surely, it's just about information, information, information.
Let's talk a little bit more, just a couple more points on leadership I want to get to. One is, uh, an aspect of the leader within an organization being one that serves as a role model. You know, and the example I'm using today and talking about that is, um, under the current COVID situation, we have many public officials who speak one way with, uh, what they tell people, what they should do, uh, but then in their own private lives, they do something different. That sort of highlights the issue of, you know, the importance of leadership and modeling. What's your perspective on that issue?
The, 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 you know, some of the recent stories where you've had people say, don't, don't, don't get together with your family and then they're jetting off to, yeah, well, you know, just from a polar perception standpoint, I mean, my goodness, what are you thinking? You know, all your credibility that you have, I don't know if you built it up or whatever it may be, it's gone. It's out the window. And, and that's just, it's, it's absolutely crazy, uh, especially in this day and age with, you know, the phones on the, the cameras on the phone and Facebook, although I'm not on Facebook, but, you know, everything has got you. You know, it's just, it's, you can't operate that way. And, and once again, I think I had mentioned at the beginning of this about the staff and knowing that they can trust you, um, and that you have their back. If you're telling them one thing and then you're off doing something else, forget it, you, you know, they're not going to believe anything you tell them. You know, you talk about, um, you know, contract negotiations, right? We just concluded and finished up all of our bargaining units and you know, and I said to them at the beginning, I said, look, and I understand that you guys are underpaid. You know, I will do what I can to help you out. But, you know, I tell you, I don't have any money, all right? And, and that's not just a line. I'm more than happy to show you the books. It's not a negotiating ploy. Um, I don't work that way. And, and, and they understand the financial situations that we are in. And I think that after two years, um, you know, when I say something, that they know it's my word and, and they believe it.
How do you motivate people and how do you keep people accountable?
So, you know, in terms of motivation, um, you know, I think just sometimes simply it just a, a little bit of praise goes a long way. You know, a lot of times the Board of Selectmen, if we're given an update on whatever matter it may be, you know, I'm always sure to recognize the staff member that's involved. Um, I think that goes a long way. Cause I, I, you know, if, if it's some project going on with, with, um, you know, DPW or so, you know, it's, they're doing it. They're doing the work and they deserve the praise. And so, you know, that, that's a big thing for me, uh, just saying thank you to people. You know, motivation in my town in terms of, and, and when I say motivation, I mean, you know, having opportunities to kind of advance are, oh, I, I, it's difficult, right? We're small. We don't have, you know, an accounting department with, with 10 positions and somebody could climb up the ladder type thing. Uh, and so one of the things that I try and do is, for example, I have an assistant accountant. I sent her to the EUMAS courses, which, you know, it's like $1,000 and for us, that's a lot of money. But I think that's good for it. It, it, you know, not only is it good for her professional standpoint that, you know, it's more education for her and have a better understanding, you know, what she's doing, what's expected of her. But I think what it says to her is that I believe in her and I trust her and I'm, I'm gonna make this investment in her. I currently, right now, I don't have, I have an interim treasurer and an interim accountant and I have an assistant treasurer, um, who we're grooming to actually be the treasurer. I have the interim that will spend probably another six months there working with her. And the way I look at it is that they've gone down this road before of hiring accountants and, uh, well, treasurer had been there for about four years prior. But, um, you know, I don't pay, we don't pay much. It's 75 or $72,000 for my treasurer. So the best I'm really gonna find, or I can hope to find, I should say, is somebody who's an assistant treasurer that's ready to take that next step, right? Well, if I think I have somebody qualified and capable as the assistant treasurer, what does that say to her? If I'm just gonna jump over her and, and bring somebody in as a new treasurer, you know, she's probably gonna be gone in a very short period of time. And so.
How do you hold people accountable?
Uh, how, how do you hold people accountable? Uh, it's, it's very simple. I'm very clear. You know, I tell people, all I expect is do their job. I don't expect anybody to be perfect. We're gonna make mistakes. Everybody's gonna make mistakes. Uh, one of my lines that I always, I say to staff, I, you know, they come up and they tell me there's an issue or something. I say, well, let me ask you something. Did you do it on purpose? And, you know, 99.9% of the time, it's no. Um, so, you know, we work with people, but let's face it, right? If, if an issue continues, um, then you have to address it. And, you know, you can't just keep covering things up. Uh, and I think the staff is very well aware of that. I'm, I'm very, once again, I'm very upfront with them. They, they know what to expect from me. And, and they, they do their job. And, and, you know, obviously there's the discipline issue, right? Where, you know, you're, you have a verbal, you have the written and that type of thing. But nobody really ever wants to go down that road. Um, so, you know, you're very upfront with them, say, this is, this is what I expect. I expect you to be here on time. You had to work till the end of your day and you're to do your work. And, you know, the way government works, right? There's enough checks and balances that I'm gonna know whether something isn't happening. You know, I don't expect any one of my staff members to be abused by somebody from the general public. Um, and I will defend them. Um, but if, you know, it turns out that they're not, you know, they're not professional enough with, uh, uh, somebody of the general public or another staff member, then I will address it with them.
Okay. Let's talk, let's get into sort of the nuts and bolts, sort of the, uh, town administrative position, uh, with regards to finances. You mentioned that Shirley's had some financial different, it's had some financial difficulties you've had to deal with. Can you describe those to us?
Sure. Um, it is, it is a, an ongoing challenge. Just to give you a little background, so I started in July of 18. My accountant, uh, resigned in, I think it was October of 18, uh, up until I went to work in Shirley. From age four to that point, I had skated, uh, my entire life. Did not know you could put certain words with the F on together. Um, it was very interesting, uh, and then just she decided to walk out. We ended up bringing in the deputy CFO from Lowell, um, incredible budget person, um, the, the young woman, uh, fantastic. So she started in December. We had the budget done by the, by the end of December, but we hadn't done the, um, the Schedule A and the balance sheet. And she came to me at the beginning of, um, January 2019 and she said, I, I'm not signing my name to any of this stuff. She said, I don't know where any of these numbers come from. None of them make sense. And, you know, we had a kind of Jesus moment and I said, I need to bring somebody in, don't I? And she said, yeah. And, and I had kind of known that from when I started. But I was hoping that we could fix it. But anyway, so we brought in Clifton Lawson Allen in February of 19. Turns out that our books had really not been reconciled since, I think, FY 2017. And so Clifton began reconciling FY 18. They didn't feel that they needed to go back to FY 17. So began FY 18 and, uh, you know, it was a disaster. But they, they got FY 18 straightened out. And moving forward, my free cash, uh, was certified last year for about $300,000 over and above what we typically get. And that was because we cleaned up about $180,000 worth of, uh, accounts. And also in the process, we realized that the treasurer didn't, uh, And also, in the process, we realized that the treasurer didn't, uh. O-only received eleven out of twelve local aid payments, um, you know, so. We ended up benefiting that three hundred thousand dollars, um, we moved into December of nineteen. Realized that it was, we were still trying to play catch up, uh, brought in Clifton to do the Schedule A and the, uh. Um, the balance sheet again, and upon doing so, Clifton realized that all of the processes and procedures. That were put in place for the treasurer's office are weren't being followed. Um, so we brought, like, finally said, that's it, enough is enough, and we brought them in and said, we want you to clean up to current. And they actually reconciled all of up to FY twenty, um, about a month and a half, two months ago. Um, they just loaded in all the balances, uh, for moving forward and they started FY twenty-one. I have an interim treasurer there and an interim accountant, uh, the interim is from, uh, the accountant is from Clifton. Um, i-it'll take them probably about a month or so to reconcile, uh, up to date with FY twenty-one, so we're in an excellent position. Uh, one of the things that in talking with the Board of Selectmen that we decided not to do was. Um, not put somebody in place until everything is clean and until the books are clean, it was no sense in, in hiring people. And, and, and they're just gonna quit in a year because everything's a mess still. Um, and so then the plan on top of that was to have the new treasurer and the new accountant work with these two consultants, if you will. Um, for whatever it be, three months, six months, whatever it may be, just to make sure that what they're doing is correct. Um, and, and we're in that process now, we, we, we are going to bring in a brand new accountant, she was an accountant in a town for. Um, uh, four years, um, she comes highly recommended, she works with Clifton, uh, in another community. The tr- interim treasurer had worked with her in another smaller community out by me. So, you know, kind of the plan that we laid out is, is starting to, to happen and, and we're in a much better place, uh, because of it.
Okay, well, let's talk about the, you know, I wanted to get a sort of a picture of the finances, you, you, uh, who, who's responsible for putting together the budget in the, uh, town of Shirley?
So I work with the town accountant, putting the budget together, um.
What's your role and what's, uh, their role?
Uh, so the town accountant, um, the two of us sit together, what we do is, um, we bring up the department heads. Uh, and the staff members and we meet with them individually and go over their budgets and. And their requests and any new needs that, that they have for the upcoming fiscal year, uh, we plug all those in. And then I sit with the accountant and we literally start going through each one of the departments, um. And then she takes it over from that point to get it to a point to find out, you know, where exactly we, we are. And so, for example, last year, after her first pass through, um, we were off by about three hundred thousand dollars. And so then at that point, uh, the two of us will go through and my assistant town accountant at the time, or executive assistant. Um, you know, the three of us would go through and just, you know, try and figure out where we could cut costs and reduce, um. Reduce the budget to make sure that it balanced and, and we did, uh, for the second year in a row. Uh, we produced a balanced budget without having to use any, um, any one-time monies. Um, you know, when I got there, I kept hearing, oh, you're gonna have to do an override, you're gonna have to do an override. And, and that hasn't been the case, uh, and I, I will do everything into my power not to have to do an override.
All right.
So.
Look, uh, uh, let's talk about the override, uh, can you explain to me how Proposition Two and a Half works?
Y-yeah, so you can't, I mean, two and a half's the magic number, right? You, you can't go, you can't raise anything more than that two and a half percent. Um, and so it's all based on, you know, your levy and how much, you know, you can't go past that two and a half percent. It's really not any more complicated than that, yeah, well, it is, but.
Well, no, but so let's say, you know, so how do you calculate the le- how do you calculate? The tax levy in the prepar- in the preparation of a budget?
Um, so it's, you know, it's, it's, it's your, your taxes that you're bringing in and what you need to, what you need to raise. Um, to pay for all of your, uh, expenses, basically. Um, and, you know, what factors into that too is new growth as well, um, and so. You know, you, your tax levy, um, so in Shirley, we're at about thirteen million, but our overall budget is. Um, uh, fifteen million.
Okay, so, I, I again, just trying to get at the, uh, your understanding of the, the, the way the levy works. Uh, so, y-you know that you're gonna raise a certain amount, how do you? Uh, how do you calculate how much you have available? You, you, you mentioned the two and a half percent you met and then the growth and so. Talk me through that process.
Um, well, I mean, this is something, I mean, the, the town accountant, um, they're the ones that deal with that on my end. Um, so, uh, you know, like I said, um, we know that we can't go past that two and a half percent. Um, and, and that's what the, that's the number that we know that we need to raise, um, for the taxes.
Okay, in the, in the town of Whitman, back in the, uh, early, you know, over the last ten years during the fir-, you know, maybe. The first seven of those ten years, eight years, uh, the, uh, uh, the town had excess levy capacity. Substantial amount of excess levy capacity, um, how, do you have any thoughts on how something like that might occur?
Um, so the only thing I can think of is that, you know, um. I did look at that and I think at one point it was seven hundred thousand dollars in excess levy, I think maybe back in seventeen and then. Three fifty and three fifty and it's pretty, it was low, I think, the last couple of years, somewhere around twenty-one and ten thousand, right? So the only thing I can think of is that, you know, when you're putting your budget together, um, in the spring or throughout the winter time. And into the spring and the assessor comes to you and says, well, you know, we have, um, I'm expecting a hundred thousand dollars in, in new growth. And then all of a, so that's what you project and you put it in as part of your financing plan and everything. And then all of a sudden, when you do your recap sheet, uh, the real number is, you know, six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars in the fall. When you do your recap sheet and you realize that you have, um, you know, new growth and an amount of whatever it may be, five hundred, six hundred. So some, somewhere along the way, um, you know, it's not being tracked or. Or the calculations aren't being made, you know, and I, you know, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't know, I'm not there, I'm not the assessor and I, I don't think.
What are your thoughts about that?
Well, I think that, I mean, obviously, it looks like it's been, uh, addressed over the last couple of years, um, but I, I think it's critical. Because, um, you know, you need to be able to have accurate numbers, um. And similar to me, when I sit there and, and tell people that I don't have any money, right? And all of a sudden, I end up my, my, at the end of my year with, you know, one point five million dollars in free cash or so. Um, it becomes almost like Chicken Little, um, they really, you, your credibility is kind of out the window at that point. Um, and I sit there and tell you that, you know, we can't do this project, we can't buy this, we can't do that. Uh, and not, in reality, you, you probably could have, um, and so it's a credibility issue.
Okay, what's, um, okay, what's, uh, do you have any thoughts? If, if suddenly you were working, who does the recap sheet in Shirley?
Uh, so our, it's a group, so we have the accountant and the assessor, uh, is involved with the recap sheet. Uh, this year, this year here, obviously, Clifton did it for me, um, and, yeah, so we had the.
What's your role in the recap sheet?
Uh, my role is, once again, is just overseeing, making sure that it's done on time. Uh, if there are issues, um, they keep, they're, they're very, very good, they keep me up to date, we're in constant communication. Um, with that, um, when it gets to, so, for example, we. You know, if we had a little bit of an issue where we needed the board assesses, a board of assessors to reduce some of their money. Um, and so at that point, I, I'll get involved, um, and, and meet with the board of assessors. Um, so I'm really, um, once again, sitting there, making sure everybody is, is. On task and, and they're doing what they need to do, and if there's issues, um, then I'm brought in to help solve those issues. Uh, on a higher level.
In, in terms of preparation of the budget, what's the most important element in the preparation of a budget?
Well, I think, like I said, what I found, um, you know, in Shirley, um, prior to us getting there. Um, people were just handed a budget, um, and told they'll, you know, lump it or leave it type thing. Um, and, you know, a number of departments were just cut and they found out after the fact, actually, they were cut. Um, especially, I think it was the library took some severe hits and there was really never any discussion with them. Um, so for me, um, you know, it starts off from the beginning of just having that communication with the department heads. Um, you know, but the other piece that we tried to really work on was the communication with the FinCom. Once again, I think the, the relationship between, um, the, the corner office, if you will, and, and other offices. Um, was really fragmented with FinCom and we, we, we have an excellent relationship with them. Uh, they are very well aware of any financial situations that we're encountering. Um, as a matter of fact, we work quite a bit with, but at the time, it was a gentleman by the name of John O'Keefe, he just resigned. Um, he, he's an older gentleman, there's no personal, personnel reason for it. And I mean, to the point where John thought that, uh, people thought that John was a, an employee, he was in so much and, and we worked with him on. Solving a trash issue that we were having, uh, firefighter issue, staffing issue. Um, so it, it's, it's about working with all of the groups that are available.
Okay, but I guess I'm wondering, when you're preparing a budget, as, as I'm preparing, as you're preparing a budget, what element drives what you? Put into that budget?
What element, um, I. Uh, in terms of, I'm sorry, I'm not quite understanding.
No, I guess I'm, 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 I guess I'm, I'm trying to get a handle on is, you know, as you're preparing a budget, what is the, what? There's two ways of looking at this, you either dr- driving it with expenditures or you're driving it with revenue.
Oh.
So, and I, I'm sorry if it's sort of a, I'm, I'm just trying to get a, you know, without, you know.
Uh, yes, right, um, you, you know, I think it's, I think it's really both, uh, for us, uh, we don't have. You know, we don't have a lot of businesses, we don't have a lot of, uh, extra money that's being brought in, uh, so we have to be extremely careful. Um, on how we project our revenues, um, and what our expenses are, for us, you know. Uh, once again, our, our departments are small, um, there's not, um, there's, there's, there's not a lot of wiggle room there. Um, I don't have, if I ran into a major problem, it's not like I had a, uh, a s- one department that has twenty-five staff members. And say, well, you need to reduce or something like that, so I've got to really be, be very careful on how I project my revenues. Um, one of the things that we did when, when we first started looking at my very first budget, you know, you basically had like two line items for each department. And what, um, the accountant and what we did was, we actually started breaking those out and. Which would give us a better understanding of the spending and where money is, is coming from and where it's going into. And to try and give us a better historical perspective, um, and, you know, for example, like DPW. Within DPW, there's a number of different, um, areas, cemetery and, uh, roads and, and those types of things. And there's, you know, you have a number of different repair and maintenance line items and we're trying to consolidate some of those. And, um, and be a little more efficient, but all the while, giving us a better historical, um, view of. Where this money is being spent, um, and, and then looking forward, um, you know, five years out and, and forecasting. By doing that, one of the issues that we came, well, two of the issues that we came across was one being the trash issue that. We realized that last year, we would have been in a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the general fund for trash. And this year here, it would have been two twenty, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, it's just not sustainable. And so we had to figure out how we were gonna solve that problem and we ended up coming up with the, um, the collection, the trash bin systems, the toders. Um, and doing that way, and the other issue too was that we realized that the ambulance enterprise fund was in a little bit of a problem. Because they hadn't raised rates ever, uh, not just talking ten years, I'm talking forever and they were charging, you know, five hundred dollars, uh, to. For, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield and so, and on top of it, we needed firefighters, so, um, it's all about the historical data. And then the data forecasting moving forward.
Okay, so you do, you do do forecasting?
Yes, we do.
Okay, how, how far out?
Five years.
Okay, um, in terms of your, you do water a sewer in Shirley?
Um, so we have, uh, a sewer commission, they're elected. Uh, and then we have a private utility, uh, company, a separate institution.
All right, well, certainly in Lowell, it was water and sewer, uh, we would all evolve with, uh, rate setting, uh, with the water and sewer there?
Uh, with the rate setting, uh, the CFO, uh, was involved more with that, yes.
Okay, but what, but if you were working on water and rates, water and sewer rates, what el- what would you include? In your calculation of what those rates would be?
Um, well, I mean, it's gonna be over the next couple of years here, I know that, um, you know, you have, there's a number of different projects. Uh, that have to happen, um, in Whitman, I mean, you're looking at about a fifteen to eighteen million dollar. Um, project, uh, coming up, and so you're gonna have to figure out how you're gonna have to pay for that. Um, and, and, you know, it's obviously gonna be through, you're gonna have to pay through a revolving fund, a state revolving, uh, fund and take out a loan that way. Um, but, uh, it's just, it's, it's usage, um, and it's probably gonna be, um. You know, you could look at a betterment, uh, that type of thing.
Yeah, I'm just interested in hearing about how rate water and sewer rates are set and what, uh, what count, what, uh. Uh, information goes into setting those rates?
I haven't done that, Brian.
Okay, okay, um. Do, how about financial policies? Have you, has Shirley adopted financial policies?
We do, and one of them is the, the five-year forecasting, uh, that's one of them. Um, for us, one of the biggest things moving forward will be the, uh, reconciliation. Um, right now, uh, one of our financial policies states that it all has to, monthly reconciliation has to be completed by the fifteenth of the month. Obviously, with the amount of money that we've spent to straighten out our books, um, that will be a number one priority. Um, one of the other items that the, that is in the financial policy is that they want a five percent. Um, number in the stabilization compared to our budget, uh, and we're actually over that now. Um, so we're, we're almost at ten percent, um, with that three hundred thousand dollars, uh, in additional. Uh, free cash last year, what we did was we put four hundred, we ended up getting about a million dollars, we put four hundred thousand. Into the general stabilization and a hundred and fifty in the cap stabilization, we also put an extra eighty thousand in the FinCom reserve. Right now, we're okay, um, in dealing with the COVID and any deficits, uh, but we weren't sure what was gonna happen. So as a protective measure, uh, we put those large sums into the reserves, uh, in case we had to address any issues, uh, during FY twenty-one.
Okay, a- and you are setting aside money for OPEB?
Uh, yes, we are, um, and not, not a lot, but we are putting money aside for it.
You, you have a policy that sets that?
Uh, yes, we do.
Okay, uh, your school, the school financing, you, how active are you in, in terms of, uh, working with the, uh, school department on their fin- on the. Financial side of things?
Uh, so we have, we, we're part of a regional school system and, you know, it's, when I got there, there was a lot of, um. There was a lot of animosity between the two because they were coming in with budgets that were, you know, eight percent increases every year, um. And I'd actually built up a pretty good relationship with the superintendent, uh, we talked quite a bit. Um, over the last two budgets, uh, she's brought increases in of only about two point seven five. Um, and so I, I like to think that, um, that the relationship that I've built up. Uh, in our honest and, you know, sometimes tough discussions, uh, you know, it's, it's got it to a point where she realizes that. Uh, you, you can't keep doing that, um, the people in Shirley just can't afford it. Um, combined with the fact, I think they're over, I think they're about eight million dollars over net school spending. Um, and so I worked with her, I have a very good relationship with the business manager, um, and, you know, I. We have a very good working relationship.
Um, have you ever participated in a bond rating, uh, presentation, uh, to an agency?
Um, so, yes, on two occasions, we did it in Lowell when I was there. Uh, and we did it in Shirley and we went in Shirley, went from a double A minus up to a double A, uh, recently. Um, two different types of scenarios and in Lowell, it was a whole to-do. We actually, uh, used the council and aging bus and we, we drove, um, uh, drove the, the members. Uh, around and showed them, you know, projects that were. Uh, around and showed them, you know, projects that were going on in the city and. And up and coming uh, projects. And then we ended up having a luncheon with them. So it was a, it was an all-day affair. And surely it was different. It was, you know, we were sitting in my office with.
So what, what do the rating agencies look for when they're determining the rate?
Um, so in Shirley, one of the reasons why we ended up getting the, the, the rate increase. Was our, the stability within our stabilization, um, that we weren't using one-time monies to balance the budget. Um, and the, the, the forty B project, uh, which was right up the street from the train station, was actually a big factor. Um, that, that having that project uh, coming down the road here, um, was, was a critical piece for them, believe it or not, and within that.
Any other elements that they're looking at that you would?
For, for us in Shirley, it was, it was really those three things because of what had been going on in the past. Um, they didn't have, they didn't have much money in their stabilization accounts. And they were continuously using the one-time revenues. Uh, our debt, um, you know, that was something they were looking at as well.
Okay, can you, um, moving on to, uh, well, talk to us about capital budgeting. Do you do, do you have a capital plan in?
Yes, we do. Yes, we have a five-year capital plan. Um, we're, we're always uh, assessing that and what the needs are. And it's, it's a fluid plan. It changes from year to year. We, we try not to, uh, you know, change it too much. But, you know, we do reassess each year going out here. Um, last year, um, what, what we've tried to do since I've been there. Is that, um, whatever we're going to spend, um, we usually spend half of it. On the repairs and maintenance of our facilities. Um, and so, you know, we've had a, a. The buildings now at this point, I think, are most of them are about twenty years old. Um, and so you're starting to see some wear and tear. So we made a determination that we will spend whatever it may be, eighteen thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars for new fascia boards. Versus, you know, putting it off and all of a sudden finding that we, we have to spend fifty thousand dollars. So we're committed to spending uh, half of that money for, for maintenance of the facilities. Um, last year, uh, we had about a hundred and, it was a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And what I did was we paid the entire, that year's capital plan out of free cash. Um, I didn't wanna take any more debt on. We had ran into a situation the year prior where. Um, they had only been making the um, the interest payments on a loan and. Now we're on the hook for an additional two hundred thousand dollars in debt payment. So we paid it all out of free cash.
Okay, all right. Um, how do you calculate, how do you determine how much? Uh, uh, how many capital projects to do strictly by the amount of free cash?
Um, so we try and look at somewhere around anywhere from three and a half to four and a half percent. Um, but y- yeah, I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, it's how much free cash I have available. Um, you know. Uh, there was, um, um, and we've been running anywhere from one sixty to. Uh, two hundred thousand dollars, so.
Okay, right. Could you describe to the board the most complex project that you've uh, managed?
Sure, um, so one of the, the, the biggest project that um, I was involved with was the, um. The city of Lowell was building a brand-new high school, uh, or is building a brand-new high school. And up until when I left, I was the point person uh, for that project. Um, from the, the submission of the statement of interest, uh, all the way when I left at that point. Um, they were getting ready to go out to bid for uh, construction companies. Um, and so I was involved with the process of hiring the OPM, uh, the process of um, procuring the designer. And working with them on a daily basis, really. Um, and so. That was the, probably the, the largest project that I was ever involved with, um, with the city, as I had mentioned, that all of the day-to-day. Operations went through me as well as, as other projects. We, I was the point person for a feasibility study. We were looking to do a brand-new police station in DPW facility slash maintenance and repair. Facility as well. Um, and so I coordinated that whole process. Um, the, the new trash program uh, in Shirley, um, that was, that was my involvement, the. Uh, we have a marijuana uh, facility coming in, um, probably in the next year or so. Uh, involved with that from the beginning to the end, um, or the. The start of it up until where we're still at today. Um, but like I said, you know, at the city of Lowell, I was involved with, you know. And e- every project that really went on, um, my fingers were involved with it and overseeing a lot of it.
What is the, what's your approach to keeping the uh, a project on track?
Um, I, I think the biggest thing is just making sure that, you know, you have a clear, uh, a clear timeline of deliverables. That need to be met. Uh, I think that's the biggest thing. And just in, you know, having that. Whether it in some cases needs to be a weekly meeting, um, i- i- a monthly meeting depending on the scope of the project or whatever. But, you know, having that meeting where, when you lay out a clear agenda, um, that what you're doing is, is. Or what you wanna do from the last meeting is happening to the next meeting. Um, it's, it's extremely important that the timelines are followed.
Uh, what's uh, what type of experience you have in uh, grants for capital projects or? We'll probably get into it in economic development too, but what's been your experience in grant preparation?
So grant preparation, like I said, uh, we received a four hundred thousand dollar complete streets grant. Uh, I was involved with that. Um, directly, uh, we just received the two hundred thousand dollar shared streets grant. Uh, I was involved with that. Um, we had a land grant uh, from the state, uh, about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, to purchase um, some conservation property. Um, so, you know, I, I've had quite a bit of experience. With um, uh, grant writing over the last, not only here in Shirley, but in. And in the city of Lowell, the difference between Shirley and in the city of Lowell, uh, we had, the apartment heads would come in. Um, ask if it was okay to apply for certain grants, go over those grants with the individuals. Um, they would write it. We would be involved throughout the process so that here in Shirley, it's, it's me that's writing these grants, actually.
Let's talk about economic development. Uh, you know, as you know, that that's a, that's a priority in probably every community, but. Uh, our focus today obviously is on Whitman. What uh, how would you attract new businesses to an investment? Uh, in Whitman, uh, you know, what would be the process that you use? What's been your experience in working with? You know, funding mechanisms, be they grants or TIPS, talk to us about economic development.
So there's, there's a number of different things when you're talking about economic development. Um, it's not just one thing. There's no magic. Um, list that's out there or, 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 you know, steps that you have to follow. Um, I think that when you're talking about economic development, there's, there's a couple of different things, you know. There's three kind of groups within the state that really focus on economic development. Obviously, the Mass Office of Business Development, that's one. You have mass development, which is involved with, you know, a lot of the financing um, of projects. And then you have another one called Mass uh, Econ, which is a private uh, nonprofit group. Um, but they're extremely influential. They have, um, on their website, there's a thing called Ready Mass One Hundred. And it lists out. Basically shovel-ready parcels uh, in buildings for um, companies to, to basically. Uh, inquire about and possibly get involved with. Um, it's a, they work nationally in recruiting companies to come to Massachusetts. I think it's, it's a great tool, a gre- great resource to get involved with it. You can actually either join it uh, individually. There are some cities and towns that are members of Mass Econ, uh, chambers of commerce are, are involved. Uh, obviously, working with your, your chamber of commerce is, is a critical. Um, and then there, there are certain tools that you can use, right? And some of those are, you know, the, the state designations, right? You know, forty-three in, in Lowell. Uh, they utilize this quite a bit, a couple of these different processes, um. In what was called, it's called the Hamilton Canal. There's, it's still the, the largest undeveloped parcel. Um, in the city in downtown. And using, you know, forty-three D, which is an expedited permanent process and. You know, forty R, um, which is the smart growth piece. Um, and, you know, typically, people think it's just uh, involving areas around transit centers. Um, you know, but you can actually make the argument to designate an area forty R. That's not, that's not really even within. Uh, a transit area. So those are, those are items to take a look at. In the city of Lowell, um, we use TIPS on a handful of occasion. Uh, now, I, you know, I, I know that um, our, our CFO always um, used to. Um, lobby against them, um, because you're essentially, um, you know, you're not. Getting as much of the tax base as you can from them, but, um, but you have to look at the picture, uh, the big picture here. We had a place in Lowell, the old uh, Pasta, Prince Pasta, uh, Prince Macaroni Building, which are massive, just albatross in this neighborhood. And we used the TIFT to lure Mocley, um, an international cloud company. They have a, a large facility in Boston and their second, their biggest, their other uh, facility is now in Lowell. Um, and we had another company, a long-time company that was thinking about moving out, MACOM. Uh, we used a TIFT to encourage them to stay. And not only did they stay, they actually built a new addition. Uh, the old Wang Towers, which if you look from the top, it, it's a W. And one of the towers was completely vacant and we lowered Kronos uh, into that and basically took the whole tower. Uh, with staff, um, and we used the TIFT in, in that, in that sense to, to bring them to the city. So there, there are a number of different tools. I think it's, y- you have to constantly be out there. Um, hustling, if you will. Um, and you have to be, you know, talking with developers. Uh, this Mass Econ, they have a monthly meeting where you're in the room with some of the biggest um, financial and economic players. Construction players in, in the state. Um, and I think that's, that should be a priority.
Okay, have you had any uh, success with a Mass Works grant?
Um, so, yes, in Lowell, uh, we had a uh, Mass Works grant that was given to us. Um, in the Hamilton Canal once again, uh, and it was for a, a bridge that needed to be. Um, built over a, um, um, over one of the canals that connected uh, two different parcels. Uh, with, without that bridge, um, it was, they were the, both sides would be shut off from one another. And we ended up getting a Mass Works grant for all of the infrastructure. Uh, and all of the, the work that needed to be done. I think it was somewhere around seven million dollars or so.
What, what about brownfields? There's some, uh, every community has some, some Whitman. Uh, have you had experience working on brownfield projects?
Yeah, so, um, there was a, a, a number of brownfields projects that were, uh, that took place in the city of Lowell. Um, there was one that we had, were getting involved with, uh, what's called the, the Tana Street, um, area. Uh, it's off the Lowell Connector. Uh, so I was involved with that piece. Um, the, 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 the mayor of Haverhill. Um, I'm actively involved with the mayor of Haverhill, um, and he's utilized, utilized brownfields. To basically redevelop a good portion of his downtown, a lot of old shoe factories down there. Um, and has, uh, used those to redevelop in, into housing for the downtown with, with commercial and business. And some of the areas down there too. But I know that, um, you know, it, 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 there's a couple of issues in Whitman. Uh, over on, on Route Eighteen, uh, it's the, um, Bedford, uh, what is it? Is it? Uh, was it an old print shop? I think it was. Um, and then over near the Bostonian, the old Bostonian. Uh, uh, mill, there's a, looks like it's an old elementary or middle school over there. Um, and I think those are two potentials. Um, and, you know, it can be scary, right? Because here you're talking about passes of land that are contaminated and. Y- you do an assessment on them and you think you have a pretty good idea of what you're dealing with. You, you think you can project what it's gonna cost to clean up. But, you know, you never really truly know until you get in there. And, you know, so you have to really ask yourself. How much are we willing to, to, what road are we willing to go down here? And, and I, I think even as scary as it is. I think it's definitely something that's worth it. Um, you know, because you look at. Going back to the Hamilton Canal, Lowell, you had what's called Apostles Eight and Nine. And, you know, they thought they were going to, it was gonna cost X amount to clean up when they actually got in there, even though the assessment was done. Uh, they, they got in there and realized that there was a lot of other issues. Um, but still moved forward, cleaned them up. And now, at this point, you're talking about a twenty-five million dollar investment. Those two buildings, you're talking about a hundred and twenty-five workforce, um, um, units for, for residents. Uh, for housing units in those two parcels. So i- more often than not, it's, it, it's definitely worth uh, taking that leap.
Okay, uh, you've talked about, uh, you, you collected bargaining, I think, already. Um, but, uh, you, you've, uh, you do all the negotiations, you have the lead in Shirley. Do you do that with council or?
Yes, yes, um, so, yes, we, we, I, I'm the lead, um, and we did, uh, with town council.
Okay, so, okay, so, okay. The, um, council sits in on the meeting then, on the negotiations?
Uh, yes, they do.
Okay, right.
Um, but it's still ultimately, it's, it's me though, Bernie. Um, you know, council, um, you know, I. I've, you know, sometimes it's council that drives the bus and, and not in Shirley. I was the one that was, um, the point person and the lead talking to the unions.
Okay, and you discussed your, I think you discussed earlier your approach to, to doing that, so. Um, you wanna just reiterate that again?
Sure, yeah. I, you know, like I said, I, I think that I'm a, I'm a pretty fair, uh, pretty upfront person. Um, and, and I told them at the beginning, I, you know, they, they are underpaid. Uh, and as a result, you know, the police department is a revolving door. People come in, they get their experience and. They're gone in a year, year and a half to make more money someplace. So, you know, I, they're underpaid and I told them, I said, I will do what I can. Um, you know, to, to bring you up and to be fair to you. Um, but, you know. Not everything is gonna get fixed in this contract. Um, you know, it, it may take a couple contracts, two, three contracts. To, to recta- rectify some of these situations. Um, you know, from my understanding, last time around, that. You had one, I think it was police, they had their grid removed. Um, um, they had some employees that were bargaining. That, uh, they were getting towards the end of their career and is one of the trade officers, they got rid of the grid. Um, the fire department, when everybody was getting a, they all were getting, you know, four point two five percent raises. The fire department got a one and a half percent raise. Um, you know, and, and I, the, the, I was absolutely not gonna do that. To any of the bargaining groups this time around, so.
On the other hand, did you get any uh, mi- uh, language for management?
Uh, yes, I, I ended up getting some language, um, and it had to do with, um. Um, vacation time and sick time. Um, and so. You know, there, there really wasn't a ton to get from them, to be quite honest with you. Um, their, their, their contracts are really. They've only had the union since I wanna say maybe sixteen. They did a one-year contract and then they, they did a three-year in seventeen. Uh, so they're fairly new, um, but they don't have much to give.
Okay, uh, do you do the hi- you do the hiring in Shirley, hiring of people?
Yeah, so, you know, obviously, there's the Board of Selectment or the Appointing Authority, they, they say yes or no. Uh, but I do all the, I do all the interviewing, yes, um, and make the recommendation to the Board of Selectment.
What's, what's the basis of, you're just, you're, how do you hire people? What's the, on what criteria do you seek to hire people?
Uh, well, you know, I mean, it's, in, in terms of the interview process, um, you know, I'll, I'll usually have a couple of other staff. Members in there with me. If it's a financial position, I'll have the assessor in there with me or at the time, the, the, the accountant. You know, if it was for an assistant accountants position or something like that. Um, you, you know, obviously, you, you take a look at their resume and see how much experience they have. Um, once again, depending on the job, um, like, so for example, we had a, um. It's, it's a, called a land use position. Um, it, it's, it's almost like a floater, right? They work between, um, a couple of different departments. And for the amount of money that we paid, right? I, I wasn't gonna get somebody with a PhD uh, in that position. Uh, so, you know, I wanted to make sure that the person was uh, capable, uh, you know, well-spoken. Um, and, you know, they were a decent person, uh, had some experience that I think could translate into the job that they did. Um, and for that situation, you know, just being, um, a decent person. Um, obviously, they had to have, be qualified to a certain extent, but, you know. Their personality and how they were gonna mesh with. Their personality and how they were gonna mesh with the people that we have in the building, and for me, that's extremely important. You know, the, the competence piece and the capability is, is, you obviously want people that are capable and competent. Um but I'm also looking for somebody who I think is a decent person. Uh and is gonna be a decent person with the other staff members and for the general public as well.
Do you look for fit?
Yes, definitely. Um I, I think fit's important. Um you know, I, I'd rather have, like I said, you know, we, nobody knows everything, right? And, and so I would rather have somebody who is, you know, has somewhat of a background, but who's willing to come in. Learn and, and be taught and, and listen to different ways to do things. For me, that's almost just as important, that if you're willing to learn. Uh the assistant accountant, right? She's a real go-getter and it's worth it to spend a thousand dollars to send it to you, miss. Um it's gonna benefit everybody in the long run.
The, um do you do performance evaluations?
I'm sorry, Bernie, what?
Uh performance evaluations?
Yes, uh we do yearly performance evaluations. Um they weren't being done prior to, to coming into Shirley. Um so that was one of the things that we implemented. Um and so we do them every year. They're doing June for us.
Okay, uh and you mentioned that you have eh experience with employee discipline. Do you ever reach a point where you've had to terminate?
Yeah, so I don't terminate. Um the Board of Selectmen does. Um but once again, the board's very, very good to me. They, they take uh my recommendations to heart. Um they, they trust what I'm doing. Um so yes, we've had to terminate uh a number of times uh here. Um in, in a couple different departments. The most recent was the, the town treasurer. Uh which was extremely difficult, um because um I, look, nobody ever really wants to do that. You know, people have families and, and, and that type of thing. Um but after what we'd gone through financially. You know, the, it was the right thing to do for the town. I ultimately have to look out for the town. And, but knowing that, you know, the person is a resident, that, that's gonna present to some, some challenges, right? So I have to make sure that. I have to um be able to prove and show that why I'm making that recommendation is absolutely the right thing to do and the best thing for the town. Um and at that point, you know, the board did decide to not reappoint uh the treasurer back in June.
Okay, uh just that, we have a sort of running short on time here, but I wanted to hit upon a, just a few more things. You know, you, you've been in the municipal world, the true municipal world for um, you know, six years now, although you, you know, it's certainly the time you spent. Uh in um uh at the voc- vocational school is certainly municipal oriented, uh municipally oriented. Uh what, uh what do you see in the, you know, in the world of municipal trends that excites you the most, that you find most fascinating?
So, so for me, I'm a big, I like to put the, the pieces of the puzzle together. Um and I think, you know, going back to, um I like to learn, I like to find out about different things. And you know, going back to my experience in the city, um of getting a taste of how all of the different uh departments operate. And really diving deeply into some of them and being uh heavily involved uh with some of these departments. I really, I really find that fascinating. Uh once again, I like to be able to, uh to build things to. Um to um, you know, fix and solve problems. I think that some of the things for me over the last, you know, you look at some of the technology that's out there. And you know, we're looking at a couple different pieces in Shirley, uh ClearGov, uh open checkbook. Uh some of those because of the, the situations that we ran into financially, um that, that the trust is a big thing for me. Uh I tell people, I tell residents all the time, it's not my money. You, you wanna come in. And, and look at the budget and look at, you know, where things are being spent and that's, I'm more than happy to do that. I will sit for hours with the resident if they have questions on that, cause once again, it's not my money. And I think some of these new tools that, well, they're not quite, you know, quite new, but for, for us and surely they would be, I think some of those types of things. Um in Lowell, we had Lowell Stat, uh which was an incredible tool. Um it, you know, it looked at all of the data within each one of the departments and, you know, it really gave you a clear understanding on what was going on. Uh in some of these departments. And I, I think being able to utilize uh technologies such as those, I think are pretty exciting.
Okay, uh you're not, um if you were to be appointed town administrator Whitman. Uh you would be new to the town. Um you know, how would you engage with the residents and uh? Uh the people of Whitman?
So I mean, I, I think, once again, it's about that kind of that open door. Um you know, I think, uh for me. I- internally within any building, I'm a, I'm a go-to-you type person, right? I don't, you know, get on my phone or send you an email and say, please see me. Um you know, I've got an, I've got an issue or I've got a question about what's going on. I, I'll take a walk down to the office, um you know, and sit with the person in their office. Um in terms of residents, um once again, um you know, I, I tell residents all the time, come on in. Sit and talk with me if you want. Um it's not a problem. Um we try in all of our town meetings to give us as much information and presentation. Um as we can to be upfront and honest with people. You know, sometimes there are community events. Uh I think that's a, a great way for people to get to know you. Uh outside of the setting of a, four walls of a, of a government building.
Yep, okay. How do you communicate with the people of Shirley?
Um in terms of, like, how do we get messages out?
Yeah, how do you, how do you keep people informed and engaged?
Yeah, so we use it, we use a couple different manners. I mean, obviously, the Board of Selectmen, once again, we try and uh get out as in, as much information as possible. Uh one of the things that, that wasn't happening uh before I got there is basically just the, the agenda and it was one sheet. Um we've now started to add, whenever we can add backup information to that, we include that in the agenda. Uh so that's one piece. Uh once again, as I just mentioned about the, the town meetings. Uh we have presentations uh with, with everything that we do. Uh obviously, Facebook in this day and age is, is critical. Uh Twitter, uh we use that. Uh we have a communications committee with, who I work, uh the, the head of the communications committee, I work very, very closely with her. To try and get out as much information as possible. The website, um I think even if you look at your, your community survey that was done. Um people accessing your website in Whitman was far and away uh the most of how they're, they're, they're interacting with town government. I think it was up around thirty percent versus, you know, very low in every other areas. So I think having a, having a clear, easily navigated site, and that was one of the things we didn't lol, it was a really. Uh kind of a clunky website, um and we revamped that to make it much more user-friendly.
Okay, um i- in terms of uh you, you know, communicating and collaborating. Uh with, you know, other stakeholders or other uh entities, state government, uh businesses, uh. Uh regional organizations, uh what experience do you have in that area?
So we have an awful lot, right? Out in my neck of the woods, um there's a lot of collaboration that has to happen. We don't really have a choice. And so we have the Air Shirley uh Regional School District that we're involved with. We have the Shova Tech, uh which we're, we're very involved with uh the tech school in our area. I work closely with Harvard and Air. Um we also have uh Devens Mass Development out there, which is the old Fort Devens. And so between Harvard, Air and Devens, um we meet on a monthly basis. Um I have an intermunicipal agreement with Lancaster that we're working on right now for a sewer hookup. We have a regional dispatch uh with the town of Air. Uh we work with Devens quite a bit on, on development and housing. Uh we have Shirley Meadows, which. Is, is on our portion of Devens, so we work with them uh very, very closely. Um so there's, there's a lot of uh regionalization in collaboration that goes on. Uh we have MCI Shirley, uh which we're in constant contact with up there as well. Um but it's, it's, I, just the, the nature of where we're, where we're at, um we have a lot of collaboration, so.
State government?
Uh state government, yes, absolutely. So um you know, I, I come, as I mentioned before, I, I'd worked in the state house. So I understand how important it is to have those relationships. And you know, we look at our downtown area and that's where I had the complete streets project. And, and we're trying to do everything, uh once again, putting all those pieces of the puzzle together, that um we're trying to, you know. Revitalize our downtown area. And so the first piece was this complete streets project. We then used our chapter ninety money to pave the road as well. We have a train station, a stop right in downtown. So I've been working with the uh senator and the representative uh who's been the conduit with MBTA. And we're working with MBTA now to have improvements to the train station and, and the swath of land that runs parallel to Front Street. And the tracks um in utilizing uh that relationship with the senator and the representative. They've been extremely helpful um with the tea.
Let's get to the uh, you know, the, the big relationship, and that's with the Board of Selectmen. Uh what does that look like for you now in Shirley? What would it look like in Whitman?
Uh so it's about communication for me. Um you know, I completely understand that the Board of Selectmen. I mean, they, they put their neck out there, they put their name on the ballot, uh especially in this day and age, you know, with Facebook and everything else. Uh people are always seem to be, you know, be very critical sometimes. So my job is, is to help them out. Uh make sure that they, they don't get caught off guard with things that are going on in the community and projects that we have going on. So for me, it's really communication. Um I talk to my board constantly. Uh and, and more often than not, it's really via phone. Um but I try and keep them updated. Sometimes it's, you know, through email and that type of thing, but a lot of times, um we, we talk on the phone quite a bit. As I had mentioned earlier, um it's about prep too. Um you know, there would never be anything on the, the agenda that would catch them off guard. Um that would be putting them into a very difficult position. Um and I try and give them as much information as possible for them to be able to make a decision.
Okay, alright. Uh so you, okay. I think that, that takes up all my questions, I think. What um could, uh board member questions are out there? Oh, Dan, you gotta unmute.
Talk about that. Anybody have questions?
Uh yeah, I do.
Okay, good, Ren, good, uh Justin.
So uh you, you touched on um uh forty R, something that the town has considered in the past and not moved forward on. Um what is your experience in working with um forty R and forty S?
So forty R, um like I said, we had a smart growth um uh district in the city of Lowell, which was right across from the train station. Um I think it's, I think it's a great tool to use. Forty S is, um I believe that's the, the, the reimbursement. For education, correct? That's tied to a forty R.
Correct.
Um yeah, so I, I, we've never used it. I've never been involved in, and I think, um I'm not sure. I'm not sure, I don't, you, you even know if any other communities or the communities that, that have taken advantage of that. Um but it is something definitely to look with, at if you go to a forty R. Um you know, because the thought process is that if you're, you're putting in um new housing, right? That that means there's gonna be families coming in with kids and everything, and it's a way to kind of supplement that, that added money that it's gonna cost you for that student. So um forty R, it's, I'm trying to get my planning board to, to go down that road, especially with the train station right there. Uh they were somewhat reluctant, um because I think sometimes people have the idea that, oh, well, that's it, all these condos and these massive developments are gonna go in. And, and surely can be, is a very rural area and, you know, to have that kind of scares them sometimes, which I understand. They, they're there for a reason. They, they love the rural feel they have in the community. But I think one of the things that's making them now move forward a little bit is that, once again, right up the street from the train station is a forty B project. Uh so with the forty R, you, you have a little more control, uh so.
Others?
Guess that's it.
That's it. Alright, well, we got Bri- actually Brian left the room and he's coming back in, and I know he has, he had that question about the uh landfill, right?
Right, well, okay, I'll ask that again, right. We have, we have a landfill um that was capped. I think in the late fifties, early sixties. And that, that I, we are assuming that. Does not follow the regulations if we were to have it capped like yesterday. That being said, it's a piece of property that's just sitting there behind the DPW, huge mound. And I've always wanted to wonder if we could put a solar farm there to, to uh be able to maybe uh get extra money to uh. Handle the uh lighting to, of all our town buildings. But Frank was always afraid to go even, even touch it, that we would open up Pandora's box. What's your thoughts on it?
Um you know, there are communities that do have solar on, on old landfills. Um I think it's, it's definitely, if you, if you wanted to go down that road, it, you, you would have to be very cautious. You know, once you start um, you know, doing something on top of a capped landfill. Um a lot of different regulations uh that you would have to adhere to. It's not, it's, it's not a case you can't do it. But it's something that you have to be very, very careful and uh it, it takes a lot of planning to make sure it's done properly.
I mean, I was just thinking, um. Uh solar panels don't really go into the ground, but you would have to get rid of the foliage up there, the trees and the shrubs and the whatever. And I don't know if you can do that through chemicals or, or you just go and cut them down, but I've seen. Well, freshly capped things like in Braintree, I mean, their, their solar field on their old dump, but they just did it correctly. They capped it properly and had a solar field. But there's other areas um where. I see the solar panels like in Brockton that don't even go into the ground, they're sitting on top of it.
Yeah, we have a, we have a number of solar farms in uh Shirley and, and they're all basically sitting on top of the property.
And do you have to cut into it with that? Um if that was contaminated, I mean, yeah, it's, I don't know, it's not above my pay grade.
So one of the issues that we, that we ran into and the, the water department, uh which is a separate, a separate utility. Um it's, it's not under the auspice of, of the town of Shirley. Um they actually were looking to put uh a solar farm on top of one of their wells. And it turned into a lawsuit because when you still, yeah, ultimately you have the batteries. And the concern was that if one of them ever leaked, it's going, it's leaching right into that well.
Okay.
Yeah, so you, you know, that, like I said, there, there are a number of different things you have to make sure that uh, that you have to be very cautious.
Do you think a uh company that deals with solar field, solar farms and building solar fields would even consider taking on a project like that? Do we have to clean it up first?
Um you know, that, it's a tough question because I get calls all the time from solar companies. They seem to be chomping at the bit. So, you know, I don't know, you, you could get a company that says, hey, I'll do it from, from A to Z for you, right? You know, or you may find another company that wants it um all set to go for them. I, you know, it's tough to say uh what the level of involvement some company would wanna get.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Dan, how many acres is it?
I have no idea. I have, it's, it's all I know, it's behind the DPW and it would be something that, uh I don't think there'd be any opposition from any. Town resident because it's uh, it's hidden, it's up in the hill. I mean, I haven't been up there since then, we used to dump our leaves up there. And that was back forty years ago.
Alright, anybody else have questions? Alright, uh Mike, I think we're all done. Uh if you just wanna have a closing word, is it so and?
I, you know, I, I think for me, you know, first of all, thank you, uh and at least getting me to this point, you know, I think that. For me, I, I find that my experience in the city, uh that pretty much wasn't anything that we came across. And my involvement with all of the different departments and, and now here in Shirley, which was incredible experience in Lowell. Um but here in Shirley, um it's given me even, even more experience where now I'm dealing with town government, right? I'm the one that's putting the town, the, the warrant together. I'm working directly hand in hand with the accountant. Uh and having a knowledge of, of how public safety functions, how DPW works, how your health department works. All of the different factions within uh government um that I've had experience with. Um really for the last almost seven years at this point and then also my, my um, my um tech school piece, right? I mean, you look at your relationship with um the school district, uh and you combine that with your, the, the survey that was done. And there were the three top issues, the top one was thirty-six percent of the people said, education. And you know, i- i- it's extremely important and I think if. And, you know, it it it's extremely important. And I think if if I'm there, it's it's one of the things that I would like to be able to work on. Of kind of building that relationship moving forward because it is such an important issue to a community. But I guess my my only thing for the group is, you know, what are you, what are you looking for? You know, this is the first time in however many years you you'll be having a new person sit in that chair. And I guess, you know, what are you looking for?
Anybody have an answer to that question? Well, personally, I'm looking for someone that can. Work with the town employees, has a good rapport with them, deals with them. And knows the financial end of the aspect of the job. And just, I don't know. I know it's tough to fill Frank's shoes because he's been around for a thousand years. But I mean, Frank seemed that, you know, he knows that he knew all the laws. He knew, you know, he knew the financial end of it because he used to work for a bank. At one time and things like that. So, I mean, I'm just looking for an all around person that could manage the town. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I I I'd add something. For me, I I'm. I I guess this is where we got to kind of get out of that thought process, Dan, that we're trying to find the next Frank Linum.
Right, I agree.
We we need to try and find the person that is the next step for our town. That is the person that we see that is going to offer a fresh set of ideas. That maybe thinking is slightly, actually slightly different than Frank thought. I I think we we found Frank was one in a million. Not saying there's not another Frank Lineham out there, but I think with the the problems that face our town right now. A financial knowledge is critical to to the next town administrator in this town. I think each, and I I guess this is our wrap up statement, so I I absolutely respect each candidate that presented here today. I felt, you know, each although it spoke very similar on some topics. Obviously have a a different way of skinning the cat per se. And and for me, it it really is is what's the next step and and really. To to say we're going to find Frank Linum who did so much for this town, absolutely sacrificed for this town. You know, we're not going to. So what is the the next thing? And and I think as we all go back and vote, I think we need to, you know, there's nobody. In this group of select, out of this group right now that's on the Zoom call. That really knows the challenges that we face and the challenges we will face. And I just think we need to pick the candidate that has shown us that they're ready to tackle. And jump right into solving the problems that we know exist in town.
Thank you, Randy. Brian, did you have something that you wanted to say? I know.
Well, I like Randy said, I appreciate all four candidates. Everybody brought something to the table, which was very good. I think generally speaking, we we'd like someone who is going to be committed to Whitman. Someone that'll be dedicated and engaged and to learn our community because. Other than one candidate, you it's going to take some time for them to be. Get up to speed on on the nuts and bolts and the fabric of Whitman. And so there's going to be some kind of a learning curve there, but. Quite honestly, I don't see one candidate here that would hurt us. So I I think we're very fortunate to have this group and it's going to be a tough weekend for all of us. And hopefully, we'll make the right call, but I appreciate everybody.
Dustin, you have any last words or?
I I think everybody's wrapped it up. Well, yeah, we're we're looking not necessarily to find the next Frank, but to to pick the person ready to to leave the town in the future.
And Kyle, you've been awfully quiet today.
I'd like to thank Bernie for bringing us four candidates that that are excellent. And I'm I'm looking for somebody that can bring the town forward. Someone that knows the difference between leadership and management, the different skills, skill sets that that go into both of those functions. And someone with some financial expertise. And I think we we can easily find somebody like that out of these of these four candidates.
I was clean shaven when this meeting started.
All right, Mike, thank you very much for being here and we'll we'll be in touch.
Is that, is that what it is? It's Tuesday, the the board is voting? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, um, is he off now?
He's off.
Okay. Okay, something that was brought forward to me. Do you think now we're going to, Tuesday, we'll be meeting to discuss which one we choose?
Yes.
You think we should add an executive session to that meeting so that we can start the contract process? Or do we or do we have our our attorney, Michelle McNulty, put together a contract?
I don't think it's a bad idea to have an executive session afterwards to to start talking about that. Is she available to?
I do not know. That's the question that we'd have to, we'd have to let, I I could call Laurie and message Laurie and tell her to. Find out, put it on the agenda. I'm wondering if we have time to add to the agenda where it's Friday.
You have, you if you do, you might have to do it right now, right? Because that would be.
Well, town hall is closed.
Yeah, okay, then you might not. So that's all right. We we can schedule another meeting to do that or we can. One of the things you could do is just set up a. You know, have designate one or two members to be the 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 people who would start negotiations with the successful candidate.
Okay, because next Tuesday, we'll, there's two things on the agenda. One is. Picking the person that we know we choose.
Right.
And also setting our our date for the next meeting.
Okay.
You know, next selectmen's meeting. And I really, you know, I mean, the sooner the better. Once we get this going, I mean, because of the fact that. If we wait till after New Year for another meeting, that means that we're going two weeks while, you know, we're just more into the budget season.
Right.
And and something that's put together and I don't know how long we it will take to put a contract together, but then the person that we choose. Has to look at it and accept it.
Right, right.
You've also got to realize that that person, if by most.
Oh, right.
Have to leave a, you know, notice if if it's somebody from out of town.
Right, so and that's usually a thirty, probably a thirty day notice. So, but they can make themselves available too during that period of time. I've certainly seen that. But you should, if we do that and then you set up that committee or or, you know, designate one or two people to do that, working with the council. We could.
We can talk about that Tuesday then, Tuesday's meeting.
Yep.
The twenty second, we can discuss setting up a two member committee. To put together some type of a contract and. Come up with a what they feel is the proper wage that the person would accept and we that the town would accept.
Right, exactly.
How's that sound with the rest of the board?
Yeah, Dan, I think if if we we can do that in open session, we can set up.
Right, yeah.
And then then go from there.
Yeah. Okay, that sounds like a plan.
All right.
So, all right, so Tuesday, everybody have a good weekend.
Yeah, it's it's been a long day, but hopefully it's been a fruitful one.
Yeah, I think it's been great. We got we got some hard thinking to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Available all weekend if you need me.
All right, do I need a motion to re to adjourn?
Yes.
Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
No discussion. Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much.